Broadcast and all that.
Should I say that again?
No one just watch them because they'll wanna thumbs up.
Alright, uh four forty-five, we're having a workshop on short-term rents. Who's kicking this one off?
I think Mike has done a lot of work with the planning board, Mia is very, very skilled on us.
Mike?
Well, I was trying to remember.
And you all have in front of you, I I think coming out of Host Nation and after the um webinar if you would, that we had, I I they sent us kind of an ordinance, a short-term rental ordinance toolkit, um which is embedded in the book, but this is a lot more um is an ease to using this, and so I'm not sure if you wanna talk about the framework of what you'd like in an ordinance and kind of from the uh menu.
Yeah, I I will say that um as I actually, I'm a total nerd, I actually read.
It was great.
Yeah, it's very helpful.
Very well done.
Um I think this is an excellent roadmap for discussion. Um you know, I think obviously the first question is whether or not you want an ordinance, whether or not you want to permit or prohibit S T Rs in town and what zones, but this is I couldn't have done a better job to have a flowchart or a you know, a launching off point for discussion. Um so I think, you know, if we were, I I don't know how you envision this workshop, but if we're looking for a roadmap of how to draft an ordinance to address these, all of these issues, then I think this is fantastic.
I think uh to my recollection is the purpose of this workshop is to do exactly what you said, determine if we wanna do something about it and then what the framework might be.
And I have a haunting suspicion that this might not be the only uh discussion because this is quite a big issue and lots of things to discuss, but it's a great opportunity to start the discussion. And Mike, I don't know if you, I know I know that planning board had started some discussions on it early in the year, but may have put a pin in it because of.
Exactly, I think back November, December of twenty twenty-four and a little bit into January of twenty twenty-five, the planning board had about three workshops on it. And we started drafting changes to section one forty-five, the land use section of the ordinance to create a definition for short-term rental, to talk about which zones it would be allowed in. But shortly after that, you know, I I think we had had executive session, maybe a workshop with board of selectmen, and it was determined that we need to take a broader look at exactly, see what we wanna regulate and how we wanna regulate it, so yeah, plenty more to put a pin in it at that point.
Makes sense.
I think it wasn't uh wasn't the goal right to do an outright ban on short-term rentals, just to put some more, you know, oversight on it, right?
Yeah, I mean my my impression is that we we really, we need to start, we might have to do this incrementally, I think, just because it's it's a huge lift. But I think where we need to start, we need to get at least, they have to have home business licenses or business licenses, period. I mean, we're right now, and I've I've brought the point up before, technically, somebody that's a painter that has their stuff in their van parked in their driveway is supposed to have a home business license or operating lodging units in residential areas that have no business license whatsoever. And this leads to us not even knowing where they are. Well, I mean, and it's uh fortunately created inconsistency in the regulation of the field as well, we have regulated and unregulated businesses competing for the same market, which isn't fair. Um and you know, piggybacking on that, just as an idea, rolling out the home business licenses, we I think that we should put something out with voluntary compliance, come into voluntary compliance by this date and have a carrot that, okay, maybe there's gonna be some leeway on having to make necessary upgrades for life safety. But if not, when you come subject to it, then you're automatically, well, it's you you have to do it.
Yeah, so I mean, there are definitely two, I I think about this in two ways, one is chapter one forty-five, which is the land use um ordinance, and then there's the other, is it one fifty is licensing, right? So there are two different ways of regulating. Um you know, one is more of a zoning, um sort of performance criteria, all of that, and then the other one is licensing, which is much more akin to the businesses that you're talking about, John. So um they're not mutually exclusive, um they can both happen. Um one can happen, the other doesn't have to, you know, it's just figuring out how you wanna dovetail all of those things.
So I guess the first question is, what's the definition of short term?
Great question. I know that um the planning board and Mike have have talked about that, and it's interesting because as I was reading this book, a lot of, it's not that you have to do what everyone else does, but it seems like the most common definition is thirty days or less, right? But I noticed here, and I'm not, I don't know the background or context, that you actually um have definition that it's no less than seven calendar days or no more than. So if, and I know personally, I've done this many times, have rented an Airbnb or Verbo for four nights, right? And so I, there must be, or or I'm assuming there is some reason why you decided to give sort of amnesty for that one to seven days. So I think that that's an important thing to discuss, just to make sure that that's what this board intends, or at least from Mike's perspective, understand why the planning board gave that seven days non-regulated, um if that was the intention.
Well, if you're getting to those kinds of numbers, you're you're talking like a motel. And that's about a short term, if you're talking one, two, three, four, five, six, seven days, that's like a motel.
Right, and that's why I, that's why I raised the issue, I was curious as to what the logic was behind that.
That's definitely short term. We have no idea.
What did they, what did Mike, what did they have to say about it?
I think it was to make a distinction between like a hotel where you typically go for one or two nights, three nights. You know, that short-term rentals should be longer than that, should be at least a week, I think that's where their discussion was.
Well, so would you require that they have to rent for a week? Was that the proposition?
Yes, yep.
So you couldn't rent an Airbnb for four nights, or uh Verbo or whatever, short-term rental?
Yep, that was the discussion.
And we could require that?
Well, I I guess I'm confused by that because there's if the definition is seven to thirty, that in my view, doesn't means that you can't, that that the one to six nights aren't regulated. So, but that sounds like that wasn't the intention?
No, their their intent was to have them rented for at least that amount of period of time, and that they couldn't be rented for less than that.
So we actually govern that, that that's it, it'd be a prohibited use to rent anything shorter than that?
Correct. Would that effectively, that that would, I in my opinion, that would be an effective ban on short-term rentals, cuz I don't.
For less than a week.
Yeah, so what are the, like, is that a common thing, that people rent a an Airbnb for more than a week?
Uh here, yes, yeah, but a lot of the the um short-term rentals, you know, renting a house on the beach for a week. I mean typically, you don't rent the whole beach house for just a weekend, it's a week or two week rental. I mean, I'm sure there's a lot of EDUs that do it on a nightly basis, a weekend basis, two or three nights.
Oh, interesting, okay.
But I think the discussion the planning board had was to minimize or eliminate that and get them to the point where they're, they are all weekly rentals, which is more the traditional beach type rental that's occurred in town for a hundred years. But I mean, that that was just one of the points of the discussion.
How how would that impact potential life safety issues? So it's it's life safety in one to six nights versus seven nights and beyond. If our objective is to ensure the safety of those inhabiting, I worry about the one to six nights, if if we're turning a blind eye there.
Well, they just, for short-term rentals, that wouldn't be allowed.
How would we enforce that?
Good question. Enforcement is gonna be a big topic on any of these regulations.
Well, I understand that, but I'm I'm just curious, that that one to me seems like a heavy lift. Could be a question I would have, but what are, what would our enforcement mechanism actually look like for something like that? Seems impossible, and I I suspect that a lot of people would skirt that.
I think it's easier just to take what the the maximum number is to be considered short-term rentals, and anything under that is a short-term rental.
And not do a minimum at all.
Without a minimum, yeah.
One day or thirty days.
One days or thirty, if thirty is your number.
That that's what I'm thinking, because I am thinking about life safety, because that was what, if I recall, precipitated this conversation in the first place, right? That there was a concern that while traditional lodging facilities are regulated, these these kinds of uses are not, and they were concerned about fires and god forbid if.
You need to know who's in there, whether it's there for one day or thirty days.
Is there a connection to the twenty-eight day rule, if we were looking for a maximum number that we might wanna consider?
Two months?
Well, but we, right now, am I correct that you can't stay in a place more than twenty-eight days out?
Oh, but does that apply to short-term rentals?
Well, that's the question.
Yeah, that was.
My understanding is that those were uh 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 conditions that applied to sort of older kinds of lodging facilities, is that right? Different categories, I should say. Yeah, and so I don't think it necessarily dovetails, but I, Mike, I was thinking the same thing, you know. If if that's the magic number and it's a number that's floated around, consistency seems that that makes sense.
But if we if we stuck at twenty-eight, we're talking about regulation at that point, twenty-eight and over would be considered a long-term rental. Would it fall under the same regulations that we're looking to put in place for life safety at that point?
I don't think you have to limit it to thirty, you 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 absolutely don't.
Right.
My my inclination would be two months, to me, that's still short-term, that's not a year long round rental, that's still to me, that's still tran transient guess, right? It's just a longer stay.
Just for consistency's sake, and I'm trying to remember, now I'm going back to the um the A D U proposed changes, and I'm looking to you, Mike, cuz I know you're far more familiar than I am. Isn't there a requirement that they must be rented for a certain period of time?
Or a proposed A D U changes that'll be up in November, the the minimum lease period would be twelve months.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, okay.
Is currently what's there, there was at the last, I think, board of selectmen workshop, it was discussed maybe revisiting that and considering something less, but the current draft.
Well, that's what I was thinking, like, if it, to your point, if you wanna have the short-term rentals be two months or less, and then you have the ADUs having to be a certain, I don't know if there's, makes any sense to to kind of coordinate those things?
Maybe dovetail them, so they line up?
And 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 it doesn't have to be, but you know, if the concern was the life safety stuff, you know, it might be something.
So that would mean that if it if it's um let's say we pick two months as the period for short-term rentals, if somebody wanted to uh rent their place for three months, it doesn't, it's like a regular rental, housing rental.
Just like a dwelling.
Three, four, five, five years, ten years?
I think the objective on the A D U though, was hoping to provide.
A D U is a different thing, deal.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, I'm talking just short, if you wanna rent an A D A D U, it's either gonna be six months or a year, or whatever we come up with. But um other units that aren't quote-unquote A D Us, it would be no different than it is now over that, whatever that day per day periods.
The reality of, well, the reality of the situation is, if they get an A D U, who, going back to John's point of view, who is
Does that make sense?
Enforce that.
And how are we going to enforce that?
Well, we're not in, talking about A D Us today.
But you can, that's, and that's one of the things that, and 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 I know I'm kind of jumping out of order, but this is, I think, a really important thing to be thinking about.
Yeah.
Is that one of the recommendations or, you know, bullet points for us to consider is do you want to impose limitations on short-term rentals of A D Us? Because, you know, the pros, or or basically those who would say, look, the whole point of A D Us is to increase housing, not to create short-term rentals, and so one of the questions here is, do you want to impose limitations on the rental of A D Us?
Permitted residence. Yeah.
And so if you, i- if you're, if we're thinking about this, it's kind of why I raised it, if you wanna say, okay, you know, short-term rentals can be twelve, excuse me, two months or less or whatever, and A D Us must be X and more, maybe that's one of the one of the rationales for dovetailing those things.
And that's, moving on, one of the objectives, at least in the planning boards with the twelve months, was to make sure that any new A D U after November, assuming the ordinance gets adopted, will not be a short-term rental. You know, we have a whole batch of existing ones, that we consider grandfather, if we want to create a grandfather ordinance for them, but any new A D U after November, will not be used as a short-term rental, that was the goal.
Must be twelve, one month, yeah, yeah.
And maybe six months accomplishes that same point, so that's still up the discussion, of course, but.
And I guess that's my concern too, is that we we know that we have very seasonal industry in this state. And if we have traveling workers, if we have folks that are coming over here on a visa that need a place to stay, those, whatever those rental units are, in my mind, should not be captured as a short-term rental, because that is accomplishing housing for the area, that's providing for the workforce, that's not just the transient traveling public.
So that would have to be evidenced then by uh work?
Yeah, I mean, if you could, or just the length of stay, if you figure the average season is about forty weeks, right, total? Maybe somebody doesn't come up for the entire forty weeks, maybe they're up for thirty weeks. But average, average for for my field anyway, is it's about anywhere from thirty-six to forty weeks that you get. I think a lot of restaurants and everybody else would be in about the same boat.
I, that makes sense to me, like uh doing it by length of stay, because if you stay for a certain amount of time, unless you're like ultra wealthy, you'd have to probably be working to afford that, you know?
Yeah. That would get you traveling nurses, that would that would get all that, I think we, I I think we need to make sure that we consider that and at least do some due diligence on what what that would look like, I don't know if you could do a work requirement for it, I don't know.
But back to your question on how do we regulate that? I don't know.
I I know that that is one of the suggestions, is making sort of an exemption for workers, you know, the the traveling nurses, those kinds of, you know, um emergency responders, that kind of thing.
But it would have to be evidenced by employment.
Yeah, I think that's right.
And it does, and and I would think not necessarily employment in Wells.
Right, right.
If if somebody live, worked at Kenny Buck and they found a place in Wells, that'd be okay, and it has to be evidenced by employment.
Yeah, and vicinity or whatever, yeah.
Yeah, or a regional approach.
So then, if somebody gets fired, do they get evicted? Like, how did, how would that work?
Well, if they were gonna stay in the area, if they were up here to work, they'd probably go seek other employment, wouldn't they?
Yeah, they could get replacement employment.
Yeah.
I don't think we'd have to be so rigid on that, that's certainly something we should consider, obviously, bad circumstances become frequent.
Yeah.
Well, we just don't want A B D, A uh D Us to be used as vacation homes.
No, I think certainly that that makes sense.
Well, yeah, it'd be, it would be, that would be the antithesis of what the state was actually trying to accomplish with that anyway, so.
Yep.
Wouldn't work in tandem with it at all.
Basically, work workforce front.
Well, yeah, you have to increase supply because we have a housing crisis.
Yep.
State right now, especially in this area.
Alright, so do we wanna just kind of go work through our way through the template, it's a little tactical, but it's probably the most efficient, right? Okay, um so I think, I mean, we've answered the global question, we we definitely want to allow them as a gentle, general proposition, but let's start thinking about regulations. What about, I mean, the easiest thing to do is to talk about zones, right? Um are contemplating them being allowed in all zones, certain zones? Mike, it sounds like the planning board has already kind of thought about that or taken a stab at it, do you wanna?
They were looking at allowing you to residential A, residential B, residential B, residential commercial, beach business, and general business, those are all sort of by the beach areas. Um they weren't looking at allowing it in rural zones, that was one zone, they didn't wanna allow them in. But yeah, all the, almost all the other zones.
That seems very thoughtful, uh now let me ask you this. Would with the, when the state changed the regulations surrounding uh medical marijuana, we implemented a licensing scheme where we set a cap on the number. Could you potentially look at the zones and say, we're only gonna allow so many licenses per zone?
Good, he does that.
Absolutely. At this point, yes, right? And we know that the state, it's interesting, cuz they they said it in the last legislative session. We're gonna regulate this, we're gonna start doing more statutes or, you know, that that are germane to it. But I don't think they ultimately passed anything in the last session.
I did not see anything, no.
Yeah, I was looking at it a lot, and one of the other things was sort of local option taxes and that kind of thing. Don't think that passed either, I don't think it, I don't even think it got passed go, I don't think it got out of committee. Um so at this point, I think their home rule, at least in this area, is fairly um robust, so yes, caps are absolutely a thing. Global caps in town, by neighborhood, by district, those kinds of things, I think are abundantly um available as long as there's a straight-faced argument for why, and I think this book is great, because it really does talk about balancing, you know, um neighborhood concerns, maintaining the 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 residential na- nature of the neighborhood, noise, all that stuff versus, you know, people having property rights and being able to use their property and stuff and such, so I think those caps absolutely make sense, we just need to kind of have a sort of a rational approach to to those caps.
Well, it have to be numbers based, you see, my concerns, I have the two concerns that I have, the chief concern, well, there's three really, there's there's consistency in regulation for the industry. There's life safety, but then I I have a big concern, because we see it happening globally, really, in any place, it's a tourist hotspot. It's not, see, my concern is not with Joe Johnson that goes out and he decides he's gonna buy something for retirement income, or you know, just extra passive income. Um you know, most of those folks are gonna end up maybe having one of them or whatever. My concern comes from, you know, multinational corporations or investment firms coming in and starting to buy up housing inventory, we've seen it happen in a number of areas in this country, we've seen it happening in Spain, seen it happening all over the world. So once you get that kind of money flowing into your town, if you don't have restrictions governing the amount of them, even if you put it down in a specific zone, in theory, of course, practicality is different, but in theory, they could acquire that entire zone and turn it into short-term rentals, now, you haven't accomplished that goal of making sure that you have balanced year-round housing for the people that wanna live here, and also while respecting this industry, so to me, having a licensing scheme that sets a cap based on, and maybe the way we do it is we look at the number of available homes in the town right now, or whatever, the number of homes in town, and figure out some percentage.
That's exactly one of the, that's exactly one of the ways they recommend doing it, as far as the caps in those particular zones. They also recommend, to your point, the multinational concern is having ownership restrictions, meaning um you know, depending on what what the number is, you could say every, oh oh.
No more than four units owned by.
Exactly right, yep. Four units or four properties, because we have some houses down there that have multiple units.
Or units, I mean, a housing unit's a housing unit, whether it's a a cluster of them in four, that's still housing inventory that a young family could potentially buy, I think it's decidedly unfair right now that young families are having to compete with you know, corporations to buy a house, they're getting outbid by tens of thousands of dollars over asking price, and you have young families right now that can't afford to even buy a house and stay in the area. I think that's one of the most egregious things that's going on in the world today, I certainly think that that's something that we need to.
And if you get that number small enough, uh a large company is not even gonna look.
Yeah, I think four, I know you put that out as like a random, but I think four units is almost even too many, you know, for one entity or person.
Is it, you think it's a good number or?
I think it's too many, I think.
Too small?
I think it should be like one, you should only be allowed to operate like one or two units as a short-term rental. Disagree?
My my guts telling me that's kind of a little too restrictive, too restricted, um. You know, some someone who retires here and buys a number of properties, um you know, you you can't really make it work on one or two if you're using that for retirement income, but your good would maybe up to four. I don't know, what do you think, John?
You know, I I I kind of agree, but I, you know, to that point, and there's something to consider, I'm not saying I'm sold on this, but if you had four and the limit was two, if the other two went to year-round rentals, would it still be a viable pass, a viable passive income?
Yes.
I'd be interested to hear about that.
Yeah.
And I think, you know, these aren't, these little details don't have, I I think right now, we're thinking about just like the skeleton, right, and these, and and I I could draft something that says no more than X, and you guys could debate it or talk about it after public hearings and whatnot, but um just to kind of get the broads strokes here of of, and then you can deal with the the details.
I like the idea, if that's what you're looking for.
Of owner limitation.
Yeah, yeah, and a follow-up conversation I'd be welcome to, but I like the idea of having that included.
So a uh large corporation could rent fifty long-term rentals and have no issue? Correct?
Right.
Yeah, alright.
Alright.
And if they have more than two or four, whatever the number we come up with, then they have a problem of short-term.
Right.
Okay.
That makes sense to go, wanted to just like get the broad strokes in, that's smart.
Okay, so can we go to this, I think that page it is, page seven? X is part two, the banning piece, we know that we don't wanna a total ban, but see the bullets kind of at the um at the bottom of the table, under the numbers? Um I know we don't wanna complete ban, um this notion of, I I I I'm gonna fast forward here. The accessory dwelling unit ban, um we decided that that, I think, is going to be dealt with simply because the way that the proposed changes would define accessory dwelling, right? That it must be twelve or more.
Right. Right.
Okay, so in essence, it is a ban, but it's not an implicit one in the sense that it's just because how accessory dwelling units are defined, but that's fine, I think that works.
Yeah.
No, it's.
Um do you care about the nature of the property, like that it be a tiny home or a mobile home or a temporary or a yurt, like, do we, personally, I don't, I think that's getting down into the weeds a little bit, but.
R R Vs has come up, I think, that's a question.
I don't think RVs should be allowed to be used for them, uh we have campgrounds, because what you're gonna get is you're gonna get people hauling
Yeah.
RVs into their property just to rent them out, and then we're gonna have complaints that they're ISOs.
Yes, yeah.
So no RVs, what about tiny homes? They're kind of cuter RVs, like, do we care about the the aesthetic, right?
You have current regulations for the size of a residence now, right? Somebody wants to create a residence, whether it be a short-term, long-term, we have standards already in place.
If they can build an additional dwelling on their property, they can, and then rent it out. Cuz it wouldn't be an A D U, it would be an additional dwelling on the property.
Well, when you say RVs, we're talking wheels, right? That's the concern?
Well, in a tiny home, some of them are being built on trailers now, glorified campers.
They are, they are.
Yeah.
Yeah. But the way RV is defined is on wheels, and that's 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 the indigestion, right, to have those rented out, I just wanna make sure that when we're drafting, that I'm addressing the cons- the concern.
Either. Either RVs in RV parks or RVs just parked in someone's home, those would be the two areas of concern for RVs, I think.
They have to have wheels, yeah. Or axles, they don't actually have to have wheels on them, but if they have axles.
Some of those park models, they park and they pull the wheels off, but it's still an RV, basically.
Like a typical mobile home park.
Um there, they have this question about school zone bans, do we, are we concerned about that?
Not. Hmm, that's a good question.
Depends if they're vetting their guests or not.
Well, that's another piece of the regulation, do you want to require that, some of them, you know, a- and and it depends on how, you know, much regulation you wanna see, some of them recommend background checks for their guests, that might be a little heavy-handed, some require um, you know, s- what are they called, the registry, the sexual offender registry, you know?
I think that should be standard in a school zone, period. I mean, just just my inclination, if somebody lives there, there's notices posted online, but the last thing you'd wanna do is have a, have a file.
Do we know what a school zone is? Like, do we have a certain radius from a school? I just don't know how that's defined.
No, we don't officially have a school zone.
Right, do we want to create and say if it's within X X distance, then you wanna have at least the register, they have to search the registry?
R Vs for schools, would you respect the alcohol and all such things?
We've measured actually from the property.
How be, how much, how, what's the distance to be?
It all depends, um we don't have anything in our, the only thing is marijuana.
I think marijuana, for marijuana, it's a thousand people a property line.
And then churches.
It'd be a thousand feet, it'd be a thousand feet in my opinion. Do you guys weigh in if you want, but I just think, I mean.
If if that's what is in the the code already, that makes sense.
For marijuana, it is.
Yeah. Yeah, but for uh liquor stores, there's no ban?
No, not that we have, no. No, it came up a couple of years ago when we were working on, I can't remember what ordinance we were doing, but we didn't have an official school zone, it had never been designated in the town, so we couldn't use that as one of the items to stop something from coming in.
Do we have official school zones now?
No.
Put a pin in there.
How far, how far out are the the speed limiters for when uh like with the school buses loading up and stuff, when it flashes the lights?
Can you answer that?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so I think I got the general gist, that if it's in a school zone defined as within a thousand feet from the property line up at school, right?
Right.
Alright. How about, okay, okay, this is the duration. Did we come up with a duration, is it, did we say two, I mean, just for conversation purposes, for drafting purposes, would we say um two months or less? And did you wanna have, you know, as the planning board had said, start with seven days or fourteen days, or do we just say day one, if you're renting, then you need to um comply with whatever regs we're going to enact here? I think that's a critical question.
Say it again, man.
So we we started the conversation saying, hey, most most towns do thirty days or less, and then Mike had pointed out that the planning board recommended seven to, I think it was thirty days, right? And then Mike had pointed out that the planning board recommended seven to, I think it was thirty days, right? Um, and. Then I heard two months or less, so I just wanna make sure that, most importantly, I understand the outside limits, do we want to have day one through whatever? You know, the end amount, the the maximum time?
No.
Do you wanna have a minimum time, or do you think it should be from day one?
I think day one.
Day one.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Okay.
I'd like to he, I know at some point we'll have a a joint meeting with the planning board, so I'd like to hear where they. Where their thinking was. Um, but just. Before I've heard their their explanation, I think a minimum is uh. Not where my head's at.
I suspect, and going back to the conversation, I suspect what you'll hear from them probably is that the proposition was to. To just ban anything below seven days, that way it was, that was where your seven days came from.
Okay.
But as I hear it, the reason why you're. Not doing that is not because you wanna. Disincentivize those longer terms, but rather concerned about enforcement, particularly life safety issues, that if people are only renting for a couple days. Okay, got it, alright.
I think you'll find in this, many people that come up and rent for three days. Um, sometimes just for weekends, um, I experienced that before. In a home with thirty people in it, and. Concerning, I I I think you're on the right track personally, um, starting from day one.
And I I see what the planning board was was doing there, and it's, you know, I I haven't had a chance to speak with them, I. I I don't, you know, I don't have some bigger version of this idea that they wanted to try to. Ban under seven days, I just don't think that that's feasible.
Right.
I don't, you know, I don't know if it's fair, you know, but I haven't had a chance to talk to them, for them to defend their ideas, but I just. My concern be from, it's gonna be hard enough to enforce, which, we don't have time to get into that today, to me, we had to. Get some ideas, but. I just don't, I think that would be impossible, and I think people would play all kinds of games with it, and. It would just lead to a lot of follow-up paperwork and administrative work to try to even chase it down, so.
Okay, one of the other, the other kind of preliminary questions are, should all short terms? Be treated equally, meaning hosted versus non-hosted, meaning. Owner occupied, do you want to have there be some owner occupation requirement or not?
For for short-term rentals?
Yeah.
Hmm.
Well, they, uh, to me, I think there isn't a proposal that we saw a while ago, and I can't remember the exact verbiage. But there has to be somebody on call, to me, if you're owner occupied.
Totally different, totally different.
Totally different.
Yeah, yeah, in the sense that. It it owner occupied means you you're renting out a room or a a part of a house as opposed to just being able to go and. Rent, I mean, to me, this seems a little antiquated frankly, uh uh to require. The owner or somebody to be on site, the the emergency contact and amount of time for response are totally, is is a different criteria. And I think it's a good one.
I agree with that.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Okay.
Doesn't that just kind of get thrown out of the? Question when you have. If you're gonna limit it to four people, to four units, I mean, an owner can't be at four units at one time, right?
Right.
Right.
I don't think I would support that anyway.
Okay, yeah.
Alright, um. Should a owner be able to allow, excuse me, allowed to rent the property for a certain minimum number of days before regulation is triggered, that's what we were talking about, the seven days.
Right.
Sounds like no, I don't think so.
Yeah.
I think it should be regulated. I the whole way through.
Day one. Yep, okay. Um. And this is back to the working thing, are there categories of short-term rentals that will be exempted? College, university housing, hospitals, healthcare. Uh, medical stays, nonprofit charitable organizations, boarding houses, corporate housing, that kind of thing.
Ex exempted from what specifically?
I think from all of the regulations, like the registration and the, we haven't even figured out what they are yet, but, um.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, for example, um, say there was a dormitory, and I know there's the, um. The community college situation, but I'll use just the traditional dormitory, that. Oftentimes, there are summer programs that somebody comes and takes a week class, should that have to be subject to, you know, a um, short-term rental?
I think so, because we're talking about life safety issues predominantly, and that a fire happens in an instant.
Yeah. No.
Yeah, but I'm saying on-site, if it's a dorm, if it's a, um. You know. A nonprofit, like. You had talked about if it's a. Workers who are coming to stay. Or visiting nurses who are coming to stay. Is that something that you want there to be? Still, like, the same way you would regulate a a VRBO or or Airbnb?
I think so, that's why.
I'd be willing to take, um. Students and include them in the same category as workers. Someone who's, uh, let's say, going to the community college.
But statutorily though, we're we're getting into. We've defined, we're gonna try to define, we have not yet. An amount of time where we feel that somebody coming over that'd be a worker or a student that's seasonal. Would not be subject to this, but the question now is if they were coming for one day. Would we want to exempt this hypothetical unit? From our regulations surrounding short-term rentals, my answer is no, because it's still a life safety issue, and it should still be.
No.
Adequately licensed and it, the town should be aware of the condition it's in.
I I think that this question is more geared at if the the housing itself were owned by the school, or if. You you know what I'm saying, if it was owned by a corporation, say there's some. I I I mean, I'm making this up, but say there is some an institution here that. You know, like the Harvard Business School, they have week-long programs and they're housing people on their own site, not in.
Are they charging for it?
As part of tuition, I mean.
Then it's rental.
Okay.
Could, if the community college put in dorms.
Right.
Is all that they're renting it to s- to students, they could be one day or?
That's what I'm talking about, that's what I'm talking about. Yeah.
Could we create those kinds of worker exemptions for specific regulations instead of the entire?
The semester.
Slate slate of regulations?
I think we should just put a pin in this, cause it's kind of talking about it in, um, a vacuum, I'm not quite sure.
Okay.
I I really think this is meant for on-site. Kind of institutions, right, not your. Mom and pop who are renting out. You know, their house for the, for the. But I don't know if you have any institutions like that in the town right now.
We did make provisions and did college in the district, and we allowed dorms there.
I know you did. Yes.
Very specific, students can be there without any length of stay restrictions, and even during the summer, you can put seasonal workers in there, so we have to.
Yes. Yes. Exactly, so I think, I think that that's what what we're trying to get at, that if there's already those regulations.
That would be on school property and managed by the school.
Exactly, exactly.
Well, the Wells Reserve has basically a dormitory. That peop- you know, people come in for one day, sometimes. Multi-days, sometimes it's a week.
What would we, what what are we proposing to exempt them from?
Licensing requirements, I I'm not sure yet, cause we haven't gone through the.
Yeah.
The exercise, yeah.
Well, I think that's, I think that's some of the confusion though, like I said, I'm thinking life safety stuff, smoke alarms, all that.
Yeah. But but they would have to as a, in an institution have to, I'm assuming as a life safety.
Well, that's why.
Motels, motels, dormitories, they have to meet those anyway.
Right.
Yeah.
Then there there's no exemption needed for that, because they're already required.
Right.
But if they fall within the definition.
So, we'll put a, put a pin in it?
Yeah, yeah. Okay, alright, um, should they be required to register before they can begin renting, that's sort of a no-brainer?
Yes.
Um, but I think that's between the light, uh, I remember we're having two different kinds of regulation, we're having land use regulation and licensing regulation. And it sounds like you probably wanna have both. The land use is what zones, what are the caps, this kind of thing. Licensing is the application, what you have to show. Like, you know. They they're just two different things, and we'll go through them, but it sounds like you're conceiving of both, a licensing. Um. Ordinance or licensing provisions and land use provisions, right? Is that fair to say?
That makes sense.
Okay. Um, currently operating short-term rentals, should they be grandfathered? We have to figure out the evidentiary sta- like, how they actually have to prove that they're grandfathered. But.
I I would say, like, what you're saying, John, if it's life safety, if it's like fire alarms, I don't think we should grandfather. That sort of stuff in.
No, no, that needs to come into compliance, because that's that's where you're going to get your problems. We can't, you can't have that, you can't have somebody getting burnt up in a unit that's being rented out, because of.
A hundred percent, so let's again, kind of think about licensing, yes, you've got to register, we gotta know where you are, we gotta know. That you've got carbon monoxide and and and, you know, those kinds of things, but what about if they? Say you wanna impose those caps, right, or you wanna impose the owner occupation, not on owner occupation, but you can only, one owner can only have four. If one owner already has six, are you gonna say, you can't do that anymore?
Well, if you had a licensing scheme, you'd have a finite number of licenses, and that would just work itself out.
But.
Right, I saw, okay, so the cap, yeah, you'd still have the cap. Sorry.
Yeah, so so there are, I I I agree that when it comes to the life safety things and those kinds of things. Um, that they're not going to be disadvantaged by these regulations that are coming in after they've already established. That's one thing, but if it's uh, almost like a, a, gives a takings argument, like, hey, I've already been doing this, you've already allowed me to do this, and now you're saying I can't. Um, that, that's the kind of thing that I'm talking, that's exactly right, yeah.
Yeah, so that's the grandfather that you're talking, yeah.
I think that's brilliant, okay.
Okay.
That makes sense.
Because I can see some takings claims arising in that context. Um, and what will the extent of the grandfathering be, and I think I understand if you decide to grandfather them, it will be with respect to caps. Ownership, zones, but not life safety, right?
Yeah.
Or licensing.
No, in my opinion, under no circumstances, but that's just me.
That's reasonable.
Okay, um, should language be included to protect local government from vested rights, stop all. Let me, I I can deal with that, okay?
Okay.
Um, should it, okay, this is a big one, inspections, should inspection of the property be required prior to the application being approved? Obviously, we're talking about staff time, right, who's gonna do that? One of the options that they have talked about is, yes, you wanna have an inspection. Or there's another option where the applicant will self-certify and swear on a stack of bibles they've done X, Y, and Z. Um, those are two approaches, very different, and one imposes a lot more trust on the applicant. Than you might feel comfortable with, or you may feel entirely comfortable with that, but something you need to think about.
I I would think that if they self-certify and agree to. Um, random ex- inspections that may be made from time to time. That's good enough.
Yeah, I think immediately, it I I was thinking if we, if we have to inspect every single one of these things, that's a lot of. Like, uh, that would probably, I don't, does our code office or whoever would be responsible for that have the? The time to do that?
Well, some of these inspections, would you, would you have code do it, or would you have fire do it, where it's life safety?
I think if it's an FPA, then that, in my view, is fire, if it's. MUBEC and building code and access, well, egress is also an FPA. So, yeah, I mean, that that, these are the very questions, right, and one of the things, and we'll get, this is sort of later on, and we've talked about this, and you're gonna get sick of me. Saying this, but the fee situation, right? If you you're going to do this internally and have inspections done by staff. And there isn't enough staff, then that's what the fees can be, one of, that's one of the things that fees can be used. To say, hey, okay, now we're gonna have however many units. Per year, or e- every other year, however often you decide they should be inspected. Um, that's gonna require more staff, and that's gonna mean a fee of X, right? So, it's these kinds of things that it sounds to me that this would be way burdensome. And possibly impossible for the code office or the fire department, um, to do this. But if you decide you do want inspections prior to, not just self-certification. That means hiring more staff, then you can plug the numbers and see how much it would cost and and bake that into.
Starting off, I don't think it's practical to require inspections, because it's, you know, we don't have. People to do five hundred inspections, we just don't.
Jim, I like your idea of that, sorry, you were.
Go ahead.
Uh, I like, I like your idea of doing it based off of like a random inspection.
Yeah.
But having them self-certify and and, uh, you know.
These people know that there's something.
Yeah.
For writing in licensing. Then, if we're gonna have self-certification, the penalty. For falsely certifying should be revocation of license for at least a year.
Yes, there is obviously lots of suspension, revocation, you already have those in it?
But we should enumerate it, because we've had other instances where we don't have clear guidance on things, and we get into big arguments about what we can and cannot do. Just just my two cents based on what I I've seen. Just a quick question for you, Jody, and I, it's it's it's, uh. I understand that you have no way of knowing because of the 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 uh, the variables and depending on what they're inspecting, but. Just a conservative estimate. One inspector, their whole job's going out and doing this, how many inspections do you think that they could get done a day?
If everybody was compliant, everybody showed up on time, it was just a single-family dwelling, probably forty-five minutes for a single-family dwelling.
Yeah.
Forty-five minutes plus travel time, right?
So probably six inspections a day.
Yeah. Plus paperwork, right? Right, just to go there, do the inspection, that doesn't include coming back and doing the paperwork, if they're not compliant, then the chase is on. Getting them to become compliant.
And I'm just asking about best-case scenario, probably, and then maybe five inspections or four inspections a day would be reasonable with paperwork and lunch and.
Between four and six.
Four and six.
Then with respect.
Yeah, depends how big it is.
With respect to inspections, I don't think there would be an inspection fee. But I think you should put a re-inspection fee when somebody fails.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I I think these are the details that we would definitely have to work out, um. But it's very, very important, the way you are going to approach this by coming, as. Visa-vis coming up with the the fee, right? I don't think we necessarily have to re- uh uh enumerate every, every part of the fee, but just. In order to be able to justify what it is, think about what goes, what's gonna go into it. Um, but it sounds like at this point. Again, these are initial conversations, that. There isn't a desire to have the town do the inspection, but is it fair to say you wanna do the self-inspection at this point?
Yeah.
Self-certification, I mean. And of course, we'd have to come up with the list, right? And and that's one of the things that says what items should be included in inspection checklist, we don't need to go through that, it seems to me that that might be be something that between the code office and the. Fire chief, that you could come up with some kind of list, it.
Yeah.
Can I ask another question about actual enforcement while we're on that topic, and again, this isn't something that I'm looking to hash over tonight, but it's just something I want to think about as we move through this process, as far as like. Actual ability, if there's a glaring problem, to go in and say, no, you are closed down. Do you have, would you say, equal authority on life safety stuff as the fire chief, or do you think that they have some more tools in their bag to be able to go in and say? No one's gonna stay in here?
The fire department has more authority than we do. We have to give them more of a warning. We can post it against occupancy, but we can't stop them from going in, we have to have a judge actually stop them from going in. Um, the uh, fire department can actually shut it down, cut the power, pretty simple.
I, that's, I think that's something we'll wanna keep in mind as we move through this too, as far as what department's gonna do that, as enforceability of these that we're coming up with.
Not simple, but.
I think one of the things you may wanna think about, that's visioning forward, however long that might be, is to bring that under the fire department as a fire inspector. Role, which is a very closely in bridges with code.
That's kind of what I was getting at. Yeah.
Um, it's it's a pretty effective way to do that.
Okay, get moving on, page ten, um, should it have a sworn statement, I'm gonna say. I like that as an attorney, to have them, if you're having a self-certification, you want them to swear.
Yeah.
That that's true.
Absolutely.
Um, fines, should they be impo- imposed for ordinance violations, I think definitely, and I.
Yes, so when we swear, would it be like a notarized signature?
Yeah, you can ask it to be notarized.
Yeah.
I mean, if people are wanting to be serious about this, then why not have it notarized, right?
Yeah, we could ask, um. Statutorily. There is the falsification of a, of a document, that if we ever had to push that, let's say there was a loss of life.
Mm-hmm.
And we had the self-testing, then in fact, we could in fact impose that.
Impose what?
Well, if they falsified a public document, a legal document, there could be in fact criminal charges that could be brought.
Yep. Yep. Yes, and that, I mean, that would not be our bailiwick, but especially if it's a sworn statement, that's why I like to see notarized and seals and.
Right, right, right. Absolutely. Yeah, my point.
My commission expires, what?
Just in case.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Um, fines should be imposed, yes, I mean, I think we could probably, for ease of reference. The statute under, I think it's four, thirty-eight, four, four, five, two, that's the one that talks about, um. Im imposes civil penalties for land use violations and local ordinances, so to me, it makes sense just to do a, um. Incorporate that by reference, we do that under the land use ordinance, the subdivision ordinance, so that makes sense to me. Um, and those range from a hundred to twenty-five hundred dollars a day.
That's five thousand?
Depends what what kinds, um, if it's environmental, then five thousand, but.
Yeah, depends, yeah.
Um, I think it makes sense to, and they're daily, they're daily penalties. Okay, um. Criminal penalties should be imposed for ordinance. I don't think we have the authority to impose criminal, I mean. Remember, this is a national document, uh, in the state of Maine, t- we towns don't have the right to do that, so. But, you know, hundred to twenty-five hundred dollar daily fines, that's pretty, that's a big stick.
Well, and yeah, and and even aside from that, I go on the record saying I wouldn't, I, unless it was something egregious like what Mike talked about, I don't know if I, I don't think I would support criminal penalties for something anyway. Sometimes people just do foolish things, but I don't, I think that the response needs to be proportionate, not disproportionate.
Right, and the DA, the DA has the right to make a choice if they wanna do charges, it has nothing to do with us, right? Um.
Go ahead.
No, please.
I think revocations is enough of a penalty, because that just blocks it out, right?
Absolutely. Yes, and I think that you already have provisions in your licensing, um, provisions, but we'll make sure to John's concern. That it's very clear that you have the right to suspend or revoke, and that it will be, you cannot renew for X period of time. Do you wanna throw in a a period of time? Do you wanna throw in a a period of time?
I think maybe we should just leave that for further discussion.
OK.
I think I I like the idea of getting the skeleton done today and then kind of crafting it.
Yeah. OK. Um, what kinds of violations will trigger penalties? I think basically any, we I from my pers- perspective, draft it broadly, say any violation will be subject to penalties, right?
Yeah.
OK.
And both both of the uh, violations would be, uh, public safety violations would might be.
Well, it could also be you didn't get a license, or you
Oh, right, OK, yeah.
partied at midnight, you know, those kind of things, um. And this is like the who decides the violation, I think that under licensing, you guys decide whether there's a violation, under the land use ordinance, to me, that's more of a eighty K, the court decides, but um, if you'll permit discretion there.
Please. Go ahead.
Um. So, I I can drop those. With respect to who decides the penalties and the and the um violations. Should there be an appeals process? OK, so this is the, this is a big question, right? Um, remember, towns, boards are creatures of statute, and they only have such authority that is are, you know, articulated under ordinance or law. Do you want the Board of Appeals to be able to hear appeals of these kind of violations? My recommendation is no, um. I will tell you, in many towns, they don't even allow boards of appeal to hear, um, appeals from notices of violation for land use violations. I think Wells has that ability now, but um, from my perspective, again, every town wants to do things differently, totally understand that. I do not think that enforcement decisions, you wanna have yours ZBA. Can you imagine every appeal of these things going to the ZBA?
嗯
Or just clog the system.
I think that's right, but again, that's one person's opinion, you're the decision makers.
Yeah.
Um, do you, so am I hearing you don't wanna write an appeal to the ZBA? That would have to go right to court. Directly to court.
Yeah.
OK.
That makes sense.
Hi Kathy.
Hi.
Sorry. Um. OK. This is when we're starting to get into the caps, right? Um, should the number permit permits be unlimited, should there be caps? And this is something that seems to, I think, invite further discussion zone by zone. If there are caps, how are they determined, percentage of houses in the area, there are other ways to determine it. Um, if you have the caps, how do you decide who gets them, first come, first served, lottery, those kinds of things? Um, so I'm just kind of putting that in your mind.
So I would say yes, and to be determined.
OK.
Mm-hmm.
That's something I gotta think more about.
嗯，thank you. Yeah, I I agree, I I like the idea of a cap, and whether that looks like you have to have, you know, a certain percentage that you're allotting for available inventory within each zone, that would obviously require some research. But to me, that would seem to make the most sense.
OK, so yes to caps, how we determine them, TBD, and um other things to think about is caps, ways to determine them, like I said, are first come, first served, lottery system, um, cap determined by distance, meaning you can only have, you know, X within certain distances from each other, you know, those kinds of things, that that gets a little bit, I think, harder to determine and enforce as opposed to really just a first come, first served or lottery, again, um. So I tell you. Where are we at now? You have five more minutes, is that right? I just wanna be respectful of your agenda.
Five forty-five.
OK, um. Here's a, oh Kathy, here, this might be helpful, so we're going through this, oh, you got it, you got it. Alright, so we're at page eleven here, um, here's another thing to be thinking about, should the cap be imposed on the number of rental days permitted per calendar year? Meaning, um, if I'm a short-term rental owner, I can only rent out X number of days per year. Um, and that, I think, is intended at getting at people buying properties solely for the purposes of renting them for short-term rentals. Um, y- you may have a thought on that, you may not care either way, as long as they're regulated.
嗯
You know? Frankly, I haven't seen that imposed a lot, but it's something to be thinking about. And how many days per property, you know, per year per property, those kinds of things. Any, you know, any thoughts on that?
Three sixty-five, I mean. It qualifies, it qualifies.
That could be, so just no at this point.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, how about occupancy limits on guests, like number per bedroom?
Yes.
You don't wanna like cram 'em in.
Yeah.
We should look at that.
Yes.
I I wanna look at that.
I'd prefer to code what they think is good for that, I mean, I think that'd be a good thing to circle back to, my opinion.
嗯哼
嗯哼，yeah.
It's angry.
And I do note in this book, they do talk about like, sometimes they'll have two adults per bedroom plus four children in the entire house, or something like that, but can we look, do you have any thoughts, maybe you're saying code might be able to recommend something based on occupancy?
Yeah.
Who enforces it?
Oh, we had a nice discussion about all that.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, that's that's a further conversation for.
Yeah.
Good, I wanna be part of that one.
Like um. What what would it be for, um, like a hotel, if you if you went now, how many people could you fit in a hotel room?
I I did not know the answer, I don't know if it's by square footage or by bedroom, I just don't, I have no idea.
OK.
But. May always have to have an extra room. Always, one, two adults and two kids, usually. But I'm I'm sure there are other rooms somewhere.
Yeah. There's also, and I think this is a great question, right, you have occupancy limits per bedroom or however you determine them, but also guest visitors, like so, you might have a full house, but then, hey, let's have a party and have guests, right? They actually, I've seen regulations say you can have one point five guests per, you know, people, so so basically like, hey, I am coming to visit family, and I'm getting a short-term rental, but I wanna host Thanksgiving dinner. Does this mean that because there's occupancy limits, I can't have that? And if you wanna specify, no, you can't have a rager, but you can have, you know, five people for dinner. I know we're getting into the weeds here, but these are kind of the flashpoints that drive people crazy, right, that you rent, and then there's a big party over the weekend, so you might wanna think about that.
Well, didn't we, didn't we pass a nuisance ordinance anyway? I thought we did, I don't, we did that, we passed, there was an issue, and we passed a nuisance ordinance, I thought.
That was for noise and disturbance and
But it was it was pertaining to short-term rentals that spurred it, I'm pretty sure, and we might have verbiage that would already address the offenders, to me,
Pertaining to a short-term. Right.
if somebody came up for, you know, a wedding party or something like that, and they were being respectful, I I certainly, I would have, I wouldn't wanna preclude that, but.
So we don't wanna put particular limits on that at this point.
Well, I mean, I don't know, or does everybody else think, I think that'll, for the most part, a lot of people are pretty respectful, so.
No.
And sometimes it's isn't planned. I mean, and then when we do, all of a sudden, these people, you know, everybody knows that they have a place on the beach, and people show up.
OK, um.
We uh, let's go another five, we only have two interviews.
Time's up at the top. Yep. Another five minutes?
Yeah, another five.
OK. So we're at thirty-seven, let's see, how much clarity? OK, I think a lot of this stuff, we can work with code, like what's a bedroom, and and basically kind of key it off of um, life safety and those kinds of issues, I don't think we need to get into the weeds on that.
That makes sense.
And I think I know the answer to this one, question number thirty-nine, should the ordinance require designated contact for the property?
I think so.
Um, should there be established criteria for response times, and I think we talked about that, in fact, I think the the presentation, they said, you know, they have to be available and respond within X period of time. Um, do you have a desired period of time?
Two, two hours, one, one and a half hours, what do you guys think?
It's code thing.
And what do you call contact, how do they, designated contact, should the ordinance require a designated contact for the property?
Plains arise.
Does that mean a phone call for the contact, or does that mean the contact has to show up, or does that mean?
I think those are all questions you wanna ask yourself, right?
Yes.
I mean, you might wanna have a local person or property management company who is going to be responsible and there um, to respond, as opposed to some off-site.
I'd probably like the police chief to weigh in on that.
Yeah.
So maybe we circle back to that one, boy.
Sure. Yep. Um. Should noise restrict, OK, this is a question, should specific noise restrict restrictions be deline- delineated in the ordinance? Seems to me, um, that you would apply whatever generally applicable noise standards you have, and I don't think you have a noise ordinance, it's more of like a reasonable standard.
Right. We do.
You don't have decibel levels though, right?
We have, we have, no, not decibel, if you can hear it from the head to the part, yeah.
Right. Right. Right, so I don't think, so I'm hearing that whatever applies to everybody would apply here, that you don't want specific one.
It's pretty subjective, right?
It's kind of complaint driven, right? If somebody complains.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We get it more on construction versus people complaining about each other.
Yeah.
Of course.
OK. Um, should noise monitors be required? Believe it or not, they have these contraptions that you can put in these STRs.
No.
I don't think that's a good idea.
OK. This is a great last question, because I know it's gonna cause more than two minutes. Um, should parking requirements be imposed?
Yes.
OK, we don't know what those are necessarily, but wouldn't they be whatever is required for?
One for one bedrooms now.
In in the draft ordinance is one per bedroom.
Well, you're in your big problem with that's gonna be down on the beach, there is no parking, that's.
Then I guess they can't have a short-term rental. Here's my question, um, the if it were just a single-family dwelling, this one bedroom, it's not, this is not just a sex accessory, this is any, um, I mean, are are these keyed off MUBEC? I just don't.
It's any new single-family, it's it's based on the zoning ordinance, it's any new single-family has to have one parking space for each bedroom.
Yeah. Yes. So it would, why, basically, what's good for the goose is good for the antelope, yeah.
New goose.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Do people
We already have that, I think we're looking at.
Yep.
Do, do people often take more than one car to go on vacation?
OK.
All the time, yeah.
Right. Oh, yeah.
Alright, so we left off at number forty-five, we'll put a pin in and have another workshop, right?
Yeah.
Sounds like great.
Alright.
Alright.
Can we keep this?
Thank you, Liam.
Yes.
Making progress.
My pleasure.
So, did you take notes on everything that you struck on?
Liam was scratching right away the whole time.
I'm your scribe. Mike, did you want Instagram for the others, I don't know, ordinance ones?
But
Yeah?
Great people hanging.
Do you mind if we hang?
What's that?
Are we allowed to hang?
There will be no interviews tonight, um, while the 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 person you thought was gonna be available is.
So, can I, you can go another ten minutes if you want to. Yeah, might as well utilize our time. Yeah.
I think if we kept on going, at least I'd get the hang of what.
Yeah, OK. Alright, we're gonna, we're gonna continue since it's not gonna be any interviews.
No, OK, so parking, we, I think we covered that, thought that was gonna be a hard one, but apparently it was an easy one. Alright, um. Do you want to have them as part of their submission, have to have a parking plan, or simply just have it keyed off of whatever would be required for a similar structure?
Any other business would have to have some type of plot plan, they they should have to, and then wouldn't that be part of your business licensing, any of your home business license?
Of a park, right?
I think we probably gonna have to come up with a plan of how that's gonna happen, are they going to apply online, are they gonna apply in the clerk's office, and then we're gonna review the zoning, and that's gonna go, then they're gonna, they're gonna self-regulate for inspection of whether it's, um, meets all the requirements for life safety. So that would probably be something the fire department or the code office would review. And then we just go from there, but first thing is gonna be whether it meets zoning and the parking requirements, so it's gonna be whatever you want to decide should be imposed for that first application.
I just, I just think we need to be consistent with the way we treat all businesses in town, as a business.
嗯
Yeah.
Do you have to have, do businesses have to have a parking plan?
They should have, right.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Alright, so yes, uh, should special trash regulations be required, are, you know, I don't know if you have pickup, you you don't have pickup, right, people have to bring their stuff to the dump, right?
Unless they get it themselves, they hire people themselves.
So that's what I wanted to ask, do you want that to be a requirement of having, um, pickup? If.
Not really a problem, is it?
I think as long as
No.
Like trash.
Hasn't been a problem.
OK.
As long as the trash goes somewhere, it's good, right?
Legally. Um.
Yeah.
I don't know what this means, requirements and restrictions on advertisements, meaning how VRBO
Maybe signs in front of lots.
In the whole thing, we're talking
Oh, that's a separate one, yeah.
Yeah, we're talking about signs in front of the properties and that sort of thing, I I don't know.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, some some want them to be identified, so everybody knows it is one, others say that's aesthetically, we don't want it, because it detracts from the residential
I would say yes.
feel of the neighborhood, um.
Right now, you see them in the windows, you know, if they're saying it's for rent for rent, or anyway.
I I
Right, but you wanna know if if you wanna require that or not, right? So that, I I think.
We we haven't seen, not that it wouldn't be, we could always go back if we ever had an issue with that, and figure out an ordinance, but I mean, we already have
Right, exactly.
hundreds of these in town, and we're not, we haven't seen an issue, everybody, I mean.
Yeah, some some people put a sign up, but if they started going up in residential areas all over the place, then I think we might wanna request some of the zones.
Well, the power of advertising nowadays isn't a sign anyways, it's it's on the internet.
Right, no. Absolutely. Yeah, and I think one of, in the book, they were talking about, do you want to impose on VRBO or these websites, certain restrictions, and I I don't know if that's something you wanna be getting into, yeah.
We, I I don't think we've really reached that point, so we know whether we do or not.
Yes. Right. And then restrictions on exterior or interior alterations, again, a lot of these are simply single-family dwellings, so I'm not sure how you would want to treat them differently from, I I just don't know.
It's 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 per our current code enforcement.
Yes, that's what I would say, yep. So we're all agreed on that one?
Yeah.
OK. Um. Should restrictions on commercial uses be imposed? Again, I I, there was discussion in the book about people are gonna be running a business for a week, or I, but to me, I think you already have those regulations in place, if people are gonna be doing a business, then they would have to come and get a business license.
Right.
That seems like a, a problem in search of a
You know, like a restaurant or something, so we pop up one week restaurant.
Right, 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 right.
But I think we cross that one.
OK. This is the, back to the parties, should there were limita- limitations on gatherings?
I think I don't think so, unless it becomes an issue at some point.
And then it's all, you have nuisance, yeah.
And they would be in use anyway.
You have nuisance stuff anyway, OK. Should there be requirement notice, neighbors be notified when a license is
Please.
So, uh, requirements on basically neighbor notification, if there's a, a license issued or an application made.
Who would notify them, would that be?
I think this is maybe akin to, you know, some towns, when building permits are issued, you have to notify a butters within X X feet. Um, I think Wells does that, do you?
We put it on our website, as soon as it's been applied for.
Right. But no, there is, like, the the applicant doesn't have to send out those cards, the town doesn't send out the cards.
Would it right now, if they were, if they were adding an, um, a a unit or something on their property, they don't send out to, right? No, OK, then.
Does a whole business have to?
So that's
Nope, no, that's a no.
Does anything that's going before the planning board or site, planning review or zoning board?
Hmm.
Um, OK, so that's a no, so fifty-five's a no. Um, this is something, you know, uh should the owner be required to distribute a good neighbor policy to guests, that's something I will say, that I know when I've done these things, they have the list of hours and this and that, and maybe the town might want to have a standard good neighbor policy that talks about hours and quiet hours, you that, you may feel that that's overregulation, it it totally depends, but that is something that is done.
I think that would probably be zone-dependent.
I mean, if there if there are regulations, do the do the hotels have that listed somewhere, that they're?
What what Kennybunk is doing, Kennybunk does like a neighborhood, it's um, it's in each unit, e- everybody that rents, it's in each unit, it just talks about this is our quiet time during, in the town, this what beaches are open, this is what trash pickup is.
That should be, just I I noticed that's left inside anyway, for for consideration, so the people would know.
That's, I think that's what's contemplated. Yeah.
Hide the wifi password in there to make sure they read it.
Yeah, I mean, it's that, that's exactly right, you know, that's exactly what they do. But do you want that to be required, or is that more discretionary on the part of the owner?
I think we should require that.
Re- require, require them to say something about.
Yeah.
Who can suggest heavily even, but but, yeah.
Yeah.
Put a QR thing on, sorry.
So yes or no?
Yeah.
Yes.
It would just be a question under application, do you have a good neighbor policy?
OK, so you don't wanna dictate what it is, you just want them to have.
No, it's for safety, right, yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, I'm looking at the time, Mr. Chairman, what do you think?
Yeah, one more.
Alright. Alright.
Okay, I think firearms restrictions.
What's that?
Firearms re- restrictions. But I think it's whatever locally acceptable. We have open carry.
Yeah, I think that's tough and main, frankly.
Main. Yeah.
I mean, I think a private property owner could do that if they wanted to, right?
If they wanted to, yeah.
Um, what about fifty-seven and fifty-eight? Should there be signage, this is, this was that signage requirement, um, I'm sorry, I'm not sure where we ended up on that. Like, some some towns want them to be identified, so if neighbors see it, they'll be able to make complaints or whatever. Others say we don't want that, it's ugly, it takes away from the residential, um, feel of the neighborhood. So that's, I think, is definitely something that, um, you wanna think about.
Maybe a small plaque that is like identifiable but not obtrusive.
To know that it's not rented property.
And and one of the things, and it's really interesting in the book, they said sometimes, you know, that's something that you want, other things that would detract from that would be it identifies, oh, there are tourists here, they might have some, you know, extra money in the house because there's, you know, i- i- it's it's a privacy issue, right? So that's something else to consider in your pro-con analysis of whether to do it.
I don't see that you need to put a neon light on.
Yeah, I I agree, Kathy, I I would say no, that makes sense.
So I'm hearing no? Alright, um, lighting requirements, uh.
I think the lighting requirements of, uh, the stairs be lit with just part of life safety to get in and out of the unit, like.
Why don't we make it a a requirement that basically all life safety, all governing life safety, um.
Yeah.
Must be invited by.
Just very basic.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
Be able to see to get down the stairs.
Okay. That way a lot of this is just common sense.
Alright, so I have a note that we are stopping at fifty-nine, and the exciting question that will start the next conversation with it was about fireworks. And, okay. Alright.
We're turning a lot, you know, anyway.
There you go, that's easy.
So now sixty-one.
Oh, sixty-one.
Okay, thank you so so much, Liam.
Alright, my pleasure. I'll just warm the seats a little bit longer.
I don't know if we're getting in four minutes, just an act.
With your seat.
Well, look at you, you still need that.
Yeah, we should do the same thing to you, they probably shouldn't have put us hands to each other.
I'm so proud, Jim.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, they require it to be.
Because they wanted to do it. Just because, you know, we would, I had enough, even though for us after. Okay, it's, uh, six o'clock, and we will stand for the pledge of allegiance. My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic of Illinois, one nation, united ground, indivisible, liberating, and just as law. Uh, so first on the agenda, we have special presentation, Wells Elks Club donation.
My name's Richard Libby, I'm a member of the Wells Elks Lodge. And have been for the last thirty-seven years, uh, sadly, we had to turn in our charter due to lack of participation, membership. And so with that, uh, our property was owned by a corporation. And, uh, the corporation sold the property recently, and being a nonprofit, we have to get rid of the money somehow. So we wanted to make a donation to the Founders Park Community Center. Uh. Twenty thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, and, uh, just a little backstory, uh, of the thirty-seven years, we tried to do a lot for the community. And we were in the parade, Memorial Day Parade, the Christmas Parade, we set out flags for Ocean View Cemetery for the veterans. Um, donated money to the local soup kitchen, uh, Toys for Tots. And, uh, just been an all-around good neighbor, although it didn't start that. So while we're making donations, uh, that sort of shamed me into making one, so, uh, my wife and I are gonna make a donation for a thousand dollars, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Richard. Public hearing on a proposed boundary line agreement for the Tilton Conservation Parcel. Mike.
Good evening, uh, this public hearing is in reference to a question to be placed on the November ballot for agreeing to a boundary line agreement on a conservation parcel, it's called the Tilton Parcel. It's located at the intersection of Sanford Road and Bragon Road, um, and back when the town acquired it back in twenty-twelve, it we had a survey done, it was a known issue that the property line that you see there in green had some questionable deed references to it and was undeterminable by survey and deed research. Um, we knew that back in two thousand and twelve. Uh, recently, the abutting property owner had a survey done as well, their separate surveyor came to the same conclusion that the property line in green, uh, couldn't be determined by normal survey methods, so both surveyors recommended doing a boundary line agreement to resolve that issue, uh, seems to be in the best interest of the town to resolve it as well, so that is a fine property line going into the future. Uh, the property line that the surveyor shown on the plan is pretty much an even split of the different, multiple different interpretations you could make of that boundary line. Um, so the process in order to do that needs voter approval, which the intended to put it on the November ballot for the voters to ultimately decide on. Um, it will be the voters authorized in the selectmen to finalize the documentation to make that happen and execute those documents.
Is anyone, would anyone like to speak on this, uh, proposal? Hearing done?
Do we have a motion?
Yeah, I move to, uh, have the proposed boundary line agreement for the Tilton Conservation Parcel to the certification and warrant signing phase to be voted by secret ballot on November fourth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
All those in favor? Four zero. Billy's Chowder House Inc., DBA Billy's Chowder House, two sixteen mile road Wells, application for a full-time beer, wine, and spirit spirits liquor license, would anybody like to speak on this issue? Seeing none, do we have enough motion?
I move to close the public hearing and grant the license.
Second.
All those in favor? Four zero. Mekong Thai Wells Inc., DBA Mekong Thai Restaurant, one sixty-two Post Road Wells, application for a full-time beer, wine, and spirits liquor license, anyone like to speak on this item? Seeing none?
I move to close the public hearing and grant the license.
Second.
All those in favor? Four zero. Loud Home Trust, DBA Wells Reserve at Loud Home, three forty-two Loud Home Farms Road Wells, application for a mass gathering permit for a craft festival to be held on September sixth, se- and seventh, twenty twenty-five, anyone like to speak on this issue?
I move to close the public hearing and grant the license.
Before we vote, um, I'm a member of the Wells Reserve, so.
Yeah.
I, it's up to you whether I can vote or not.
I don't see a conflict.
Okay. All those in favor?
Well, I second that first.
Okay. Second is noted, all those in favor?
Yeah.
Four zero. Uh, the next item has been withdrawn, good news.
I'm sorry?
The next item.
That's been withdrawn, um, from, uh, by Peter Kahn, who is on the committee, and he emailed me last evening, asked that the matter be withdrawn from the agenda.
So we're on to good news.
On to good news, I I'd love to do a little shout-out for one of our employees, um, I had a resident reach out to me a week ago, and, uh, this was regarding Scott Cooper, who is one of our great ambassadors at the train station. And, uh, in this particular case, the resident had a emergency medical situation that arose, um, and their family requiring that they had to get to Boston immediately. Um, they recognized that there was a train available, um, they went right to the train station, turned out that there were reportedly no seats on the train. Um, Scott made room for this person, um, and through his efforts, um, the the person was able to get to Boston, be with their family, uh, member during that emergency medical situation. And, uh, they just brought that to my attention to say what a great ambassador Scott is, um, how he greets people all the time when they come off the train or when they're going onto the train, and sometimes those are the folks that don't get much recognition in our community. Um, so a great shout-out to Scott and the others that work there as well.
Any other items of good news? Okay, we'll go into the next phase, open to the public, it's, uh, for a total of ten minutes. Uh, each speaker will introduce themselves and have a a period of time up to three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Scott D. Felice, I'm here on behalf of the Founders Park Community Center Committee, and, uh, I'd just like to piggyback on the good news. Last evening, the planning board approved our plan, we are fully approved now, we are ready to go forward. Uh, so the heavy lifting begins with, uh, some fundraising, but, uh, we are well on our way. I would like to thank Dave McKenzie and ATAR Engineering for all of their hard work shepherding us through the process, we're ready to go.
Good evening, everyone, hopefully you can hear me, um, just wanna say, we're the select board and town manager. I'm here, uh, to raise some concerns about the potential use of the flock, uh, safety surveillance cameras in Wells, I thought this was under on the agenda for this evening, I'm not sure if it still is, but it was the last I had checked. Um, and I just respectfully ask the board to please, um, as you're, when when we do have a presentation, as you're listening to it, to please be care, um, to listen carefully and to be critical, uh, while you're listening to it, um, because I think we're really setting up the town for some serious legal and financial liabilities with Flock. Um, and not only the Flock, but the fact that we have the two eighty-seven G agreement as well between those two, I think we're really setting ourselves up for some issues, and to give you just a sense of what that might look like in real numbers, um, the Maricopa County in Arizona, they had a two eighty-seven G program that led to unconstitutional detentions and racial profiling, and ultimately ended up costing taxpayers roughly fifty-six million dollars in legal fees and law and lawsuit payouts, for those who may not be familiar with that. And in Norfolk, Virginia, residents are currently suing the city over its use of flock cameras, uh, arguing they violate constitutional protections, and if the case succeeds, which it's it's still litigation, but the city could face millions more in damages, and it's already spent over half a million dollars just annually on the system itself, so I don't know if everyone is aware of the significant cost involved with that. Um, with the two eighty-seven G already in place and adding that automated surveillance system, this really increases our risk for legal residents and citizens to actually get funneled through and flagged for ICE and for ICE custody without any due process, and that's not just a civil rights issue, but then it it puts us in liability again and more lawsuits. Um, I'd also like to note that there have been a significant number of documented cases where flock surveillance has been abused, uh, leading to instances involving stalking, bribery, and data being shared with unauthorized agencies. Not sure if you're all familiar with that or not, but that's, and I have a link here, and I'll actually send this an email as a follow-up to this. Um, it's also been cited that the data can be misread, leading to unnecessary police interactions, again, putting the town at risk of lawsuits. Um, really, I'm here just to ask you to consider, you know, how are we gonna protect ourselves legally and financially if the combination of these two programs result in lawsuits that we can't afford? Uh, lastly, just before moving forward, I ask, when you do have an opportunity to review this presentation or this contract or whatever it is, um, to please conduct a full, uh, cost benefit and legal review analysis, I think that's really important for something like this. And then to explore alternative public safety strategies that aren't going to expose us to lawsuits and other risks, um, for our citizens' rights, and I appreciate you just listening, and hopefully you'll take the time to review it carefully, thank you.
Hi, my name is Meg Redes, and my husband Tony Lepena and I have been residents of Wells since two thousand and nine. And we're so committed to this town that we actually bought our burial plots here, just to let you know, that's that's our commitment. Um, I I wanna echo what I just heard from the previous speaker, and also thank you for the opportunity for us to be given the chance to be able to speak about this, about the proposal to bring flock, um, into our town, and it's referred to as ALPRs, which are the Automated License Plate Readers. Um, the funding, that's one thing that I was very concerned about, um, their subscription fee is twenty-five hundred dollars per camera per year. And then the installation fee can run a hundred and fifty to twelve fifty per installation, so my question would be funding, you know, again, money spent. Uh, legality, I'm very, very concerned about that as well, um, there's a, like you just heard about the series of legal challenges, there's also a federal lawsuit suit that has been filed by the Institute for Justice in Virginia. And these lawsuits are based on the violation of the Fourth Amendment's protection against unreasonable searches. Flock's network creates a massive warrantless surveillance system that tracks all citizens' movements. So my facts that I have here are documented by D-Flock, which is a community-driven project that maps surveillance devices around the world. And ALPRs do not reduce crime, there's no independent research proving that. Any claims made have been produced by the companies selling the cameras and agencies buying them, but nothing independent has been proven. Their major security risk, like you just heard, companies that make these history have poor security practices and can lead to data breaches and unauthorized access to very sensitive information. They're dragnet surveillance, which means that anybody and everybody is tracked. And there was a study done in Piedmont, California, they found that less than point three percent of the ALPR hits might translate to a useful investigative lead, even though most plates recorded were not on a warrant list, information on all people's movements were still logged throughout the day. ALPRs errors can create dangerous police interactions, there have been cases where misread errors have led to dangerous police encounters with pulling guns on innocent drivers, putting both law enforcement and citizens at risk. Cameras are not foolproof. So finally, what they do is they record all vehicles that pass by, not just those involved in crimes. They capture license plates, unique identifying features, locations, dates, and times of every vehicle. No ma- regardless of whether a driver suspected wrongdoing, your movements will be tracked and stored often for long periods of time. This is the very definition of an assault on our Fourth Amendment rights, and we are at a loss to understand the need for this in Wells. And I really appreciate the time and the fact that you're listening to this, I really do, thank you.
Hello, um, I'm Maura Kelly, and at the last Board of Selective Meeting, I asked why you want to participate in the two eighty-seven G program, and then provided legal research about the power of the police to stop, detain, and arrest and transport people without any need for the two eighty-seven G, and now, this week, we learned about the flock safety proposal, and I hope it's not a signed contract. And now, this week, we learn about the Flock Safety proposal, and I hope it's not a signed contract. So again, I ask why? What is going on in Wells that we need such things? Is the crime problem so great that we need to spend money like this and risk everything we've heard about for these two programs? We recently voted in favor of three more police officers and an increase in upgrading police technology. How do these two programs fit with those increases? And again, what's going on that there is a perceived need in our town? If there is, we need to know, because we are supposedly the friendliest, safest town in Maine. Thank you.
Bob Moore, in Wells since 2011. And I love this town. I don't want to live under a police state of affairs where the honorable police department that we have gets dragged into this kind of muck and mire of trying to respond to a problem that really doesn't exist. That is, the immigration problem we have is that we're getting rid of people that we need in this country, that are honorable citizens and taxpayers and all the rest, and working hard. But I do not want to live in a Gestapo state. And I'm afraid that things like this create a taint for our honorable police department and for the reputation of the town. So I really hope that you will think that carefully and not support Flock or ICE or any of that. Thanks.
Okay, moving on. Current agenda items: Review and action on accounts payable and payroll warrants.
I read the motion.
Please.
I move to approve and sign the warrant dated August 19th, 2025, in the amount of $2,592,735.30, and no general assistance warrant at this time.
Second. All those in favor? Four zero. Update and action on committees, projects, issues, purchases, and personnel. First item, discussion and action to consider whether we recognize a lawful intrusion into Atlantic Avenue as requested by Kristi A. Yurko, trustee of the Atlantic Avenue Irrevocable Trust, owner of the property located at 100 Atlantic Avenue, Wells, tax map 125, lot 43.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Just to introduce myself, I'm Alex Pringle, a colleague of Leah's from Drummond-Woodson. The matter before you tonight, the agenda item has kind of given it away, is to determine whether you're going to recognize purported intrusion by building on the property listed here into Atlantic Avenue. And the question for you to figure out is, under 23, MRS 2952, A, whether this intrusion exists, and B, if it does exist, how long it's been there for? The reason is because under this statute, if the intrusion has been there for less than 40 years, it's an illegal intrusion, and it is subject to enforcement and removal. If it's been there for 40 years or more, and this can be proved, it's then viewed as a legal intrusion, which redefines the scope of the right of way. So it's actually a fairly important piece. We're trying to figure out exactly where the edge of the road is and whether there's enough evidence in front of you to make that determination to. I don't know if Jodeen is with us to give us some information on the sort of permitting background, which will help you sort of understand how we got here. And then we can walk through these sort of available information we have on this issue.
Mike's going to bring the building up on the screen. It's a building from the 1970s, the original property location. The house was built in 1930s, and it looks like this porch was 1970 vintage, thereabouts. And all they want to do is replace it in the same footprint and lower the roof line a little bit. And it's 6.4 feet wide, and it's about 16 feet, 16 feet long. And they just want to rebuild it in the same footprint. It's a pretty simple project, but it's been a long time getting this intrusion taken care of.
Yeah, I was going to say, they're looking to get a building permit, and that's what triggered this question about the intrusion. I don't know if there's any representative from the trust here tonight who wants to speak and just address the board?
Yes, so my name is Paul Bastian. My name is Paul Bastian. I'm a family, a member of Kristi Yurko. And I'm a builder in Connecticut, and I do work up in this area, Dover, New Hampshire and Durham, New Hampshire. So what we want to do, it's actually sinking into the sand at that point, so it's been like that since I was a kid, you know? So at that point, my cousin who owned it was, he just not handy. So I took over to try to get the permit to be able to rebuild that in the same footprint. And that's when we, you know, we were told that we need to get the consent agreement. So we went through the system with Jodeen's help, and that's what we're here for now, you know?
So in terms of the legal issues, Jodeen sort of hinted at this a little bit, but from what we can tell, reviewing the town's property tax records, there's evidence that the house was built in 1930. We obviously have pictures that depict the extent. I know the board has been providing with copies of these surveys. The first survey is from 1973, that does depict the house and an intrusion into Atlantic Avenue. That largely matches up with what we see here on this more recent survey. So the combination of the town's property tax records and the surveys that we have would seem to indicate that this intrusion has been here since at least 1973.
So more than 40 years?
So more than 40 years, based on the evidence that we have in front of us.
Can I just ask something?
Please.
Okay, thank you. Okay, first of all, I think back in 91 in that area, we had a gentleman that we surveyed, I remember surveyed up and down Atlantic Avenue. And there were several places that were, had been intruding. But they said that as long, I don't know if it's in the records or anything, but at that time, rather than make the people tear anything off the building, there was just an agreement to let it stay, but not get bigger, type of thing.
Yep.
We probably didn't put, I don't know if they put it in writing at any point. I was an assessor here then, but I don't remember, you know, because that was the selectman that were doing that. But I think, I think we do a consent agreement normally, right? Isn't that what we do? And I think that's what I would be more comfortable doing, just because it's been there 40 years. We know that it's been that for, or whatever, it's been that way. But it was with the thought that the people shouldn't have to tear something off their house, and we kind of left it there. But to do what you're asking, which is to say, for us to say it's a recognized permanent part, and you own the land underneath it at that point, is that what you're trying to say?
Well, it redefines the extent of the road right of way. So it indicates that it's been there for 40 years, and that under 23, MRS 2952, it's legally allowed to remain.
Okay. But I think either way, I would think that no matter what, the vote, people have to vote on that, because we're giving away something, a right that we had or ownership that we had to do that, regardless of whether it's been there 40 years or not. I think the reason why it was left there is so that the people could have it there and not have it torn off their house.
Yeah, so I think the intention in bringing this agenda item forward, I think is very much in line with what you're saying, which is allowing them to maintain the existing structure, not to expand it, not to increase the amount of the intrusion, but sort of maintain the status quo.
But with the understanding that we know that they're in the right of way?
Exactly. So that it sort of redefines it and makes it clear that everybody's aware of the extent. And that would, to the extent that that gets approved, you know, found and approved by the board, an affidavit would be signed, presumably by the chair on behalf of the board, that we recognize that. That would get recorded in the registry.
Right. Okay, I just, are we giving up a right to that as a town? To have that happen, is my question.
When you say giving up a right, you mean...
Giving up a right of ownership of that or the pot, because a road normally would go right there, right through that porch.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think, it's not like conveying a deed where you're sort of voting to give away property. In this case, what you're actually doing is just recognizing that under the statute, this has already happened.
Right. And isn't that what we do when we do a consent agreement?
To a degree. We've had some of them before. For instance, if they want to move the building, we like them to get it back onto their own property, but they aren't moving this building. So just to enhance...
Is there a room to move the building?
They're not moving the building in this case. So if they were going to move the building, then we would ask them to get it back on their own property, and that's happened along Webpan and along Atlantic Avenue, but this isn't that case.
But if we agreed to this, we wouldn't be able to require, if they were going to move it, we wouldn't be able to have them move it back if we...
We could possibly, sure. I mean, it's still our land. It's still the town's land.
Yes, the question I'm having.
Yeah, we're just memorializing the fact that this is there, and we've accepted the fact it's there. It doesn't mean that if they decide they want to rebuild it, that the town has to let them. They'll never be able to build it any higher than it is. So they could never build a second story or make it year-round dwelling use. So it can't be any more than what it is right now.
So if they, they were to, a future owner were to do a tear down and rebuild, what would happen?
We would get it back onto their property.
And would that require, would that allow them to go higher or no?
Yep, they'd be back on their own property.
Okay. And at that point, following up what Jim said, if we have this agreement, would that make us have to go to court to be able to make them do that?
No.
It's also worth remembering that the last time that an issue came up like this, and I think it was back in 2015, this is essentially the way that we recognize that intrusion as well. We didn't do a consent agreement at that time. We similarly held a hearing like this to recognize the intrusion, and then had them record an affidavit in the registry memorializing that.
So making a decision on this property doesn't restrict the right of way for any of the rest of Atlantic?
No. Essentially, these get determined on a case-by-case basis, when the property owners can come in before you and demonstrate that that's been there. Now, obviously, if we look at this 1973 survey, there are definitely other properties that are... But it's really on those property owners to come in and make that argument before you. So you're not making a blanket decision tonight to recognize everything. It's really just for this specific property.
I guess unless like the fire department or somebody else has a good reason not to allow it, I don't see an issue with keeping it.
It's basically the same thing as a consent agreement, only it just is a more public acknowledgement. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
So if I might ask you, sir, are you planning to completely tear down the porch and rebuild it?
No, we're going to keep the roof, but keep the same roof line right there. And underneath, we're going to take the glass off. The glass has actually fallen apart from the framing. So that's a big, it's a big thing. It's going to happen forever, since I was a kid. But, and then we're just going to rebuild, you know, new footings that are going to be up higher. It's going to be engineered footings there, do your flooring there, and then do the new windows going up. So the roof stays the same, then we just replace the roof.
Because if you were to tear it down, you could rebuild.
Yeah, no, no. I mean, it's also about its cost for them too. So they're, you know, it's an old family, you know, it's an old family cottage. It's a cottage, and it's held together with caulk and sand, you know? So I think it's time just to get that thing at least level, you know, so.
I don't see how that's hurting anybody.
No, I don't have any problem with that. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't a... That it would prevent us in the future from correcting that mistake. Okay.
Anyone else? So what do we need to do here? Do we need some kind of a motion?
So procedurally, you would need a motion to recognize the intrusion as depicted on the 2024 survey and the 1973 survey. To that extent, you would note that it can't be enlarged or increased in any way. And then assuming that motion were to pass, you would probably want a second motion to authorize the chair to sign the findings and the affidavit on the board's behalf.
Well, I think if we vote on it, we sign it anyway. Okay, so if I were to make a motion to recognize a lawful intrusion onto Atlantic Avenue as requested by Kristi A. Yurko, trustee of the Atlantic Avenue Irrevocable Trust, owner of the property located at 100 Atlantic Avenue, Wells, tax map 125, lot 43. Do you want all the...
To the extent depicted on the 1973 survey and the 2024 survey.
To the extent, it is depicted on the 1973 survey?
Yep.
And what's the other part?
The 2024 survey.
And the 2024 survey.
And that it may not be altered or enlarged,
providing that the putting of foundation under the structure shall not be considered an alteration or enlargement.
And it may not be altered or enlarged, except for...
She has it now.
Thank you very much. Thank you. So moved.
Do I have a second? Second? All those in favor? Four zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. And could we have a motion to authorize the chair to sign the affidavit on behalf of the board memorializing that so they can report that in the registry?
I think we all sign it. We all sign it.
We sign them all anyway.
Okay, usually the way it was done back in 2015 is just have the chair sign on behalf of the board. But if you all want to sign the affidavit, you could drop it down.
I think you're fine if you authorize, in this case, the vice chair or all of the way. I think you're fine either way.
Just, we'll just leave it with everybody, because Jim...
Yeah, we all, we all sign it anyway.
We'll all sign it.
Well, you draft it, Paul. Do you need a motion on that, or is it, you're all signed?
If they're all going to sign it, then they're good.
Okay, perfect.
Next item, to hear an informational presentation by the Police Department Personnel and Flock Safety on the enhancement of community safety through technology.
Representative from Flock, Dan Delgrosso, is here this evening, as well as, I believe, Chief Button, Sergeant Baez, and others.
You want to swing that so you guys can see it?
I can see. Do you guys see it okay?
No, that one's...
That one's down.
Can you see that? That one's out.
Yeah. It's on the agenda later. Replace.
Oh, yeah, right to replace that, yes.
Can you see it, guys?
Yep, see it. Great. Thank you, chief.
Ladies and gentlemen, the select board.
I just want to, just key it up real quick. This is Dan Delgrosso, from Flock Safety. He, as the town manager, put on the agenda, we're here tonight to give you an informational presentation on technology that we've been exploring to enhance the departmental services, to improve safety for the residents of the town of Wells. She can jump on this table. I thought she was shutting him off.
Me too. I thought so.
I felt like I was in school again, getting a presentation.
Time to go?
Yeah, this is, this is Dan. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, Dan Delgrosso, thank you all for having me tonight. I'm the territory manager for Flock Safety. And first off, I come from a small coastal town south of Boston, so I really can appreciate the pride that you all have for your town here in Wells. A little bit about Flock Safety. Over 1,000 employees. We're all U.S.-based. We work with over 5,000 local police departments nationwide, and our mission is to help eliminate crime and build a safer future for our country. A little bit more about Flock. We work in 49 out of 50 states. We are partners with the NCIC, which is the National Crime Information Center, and the National Center for Missing and Exploited Children as well, to help aid and solve crime across the country. The challenge that most agencies face today, and I'm sure, you know, you've heard this before, is staffing shortages. It is almost impossible to hire and retain in law enforcement these days. It's all up and down in New England and the state of Maine. Every agency I talk to, it is really, really hard to fill these open roles that you have and then retain the officers once you do fill it. And so part of what Flock aims to do is allow your agencies to do more with less and bridge that gap by using technology. We will never replace an officer. That's not what we're here to do. But our goal is to allow these folks here to be more, act quicker, act safer, knowing the challenges that they face today. In terms of what the partnership with Flock looks like, it's an all-inclusive package... In terms of what the partnership with Flock looks like, it's an all-inclusive package where we provide that true sense of partnership. It's maintenance, it's installation, it's support, it's community outreach, it's everything included, it's not just to give you the hardware and let you go. Flock is with you, the entirety of the partnership. I will be here, we will have technicians, we will have everyone needed. We have a policy and community outreach team, all part of the package that you get when you partner with Flock. In terms of what the license plate cameras do, um they are recording images, still images of the vehicle. The only data that we are collecting is a license plate if we can see it and the make, model, and color of the vehicle. There's no facial recognition, there's no speed tracking, there's no traffic citations, there's no personal identifying information anywhere on our platform. Uh it's strictly the vehicle information that is captured in the flock camera. I know a lot of people's concerns are about privacy, and so I really wanna um address this and and hammer this home that. The data that's being collected by the cameras is completely owned by the police force. Flock has no access to it. Um only other agencies can see it if you allow it, so it is your data truly to do with what you want. We do not um collaborate with any other agencies without permission from the chief of police and the town manager. So that's nothing that Flock handles, it is all your data owned and operated by you. Uh the data is automatically deleted after twenty-one days, it's compliant with the state uh regulations in Maine. So Flock automatically flushes all that data after twenty-one days. Um you don't need to do anything, it's it's all gone. Again, no individual or personal data being collected by the camera, it's strictly vehicle information. Um and to tell you a little bit more about the the transparency and accountability on Flock's side. We, every single search that's done in the platform needs a reason and it needs a user. So we will have an audit trail of every single search run and you can easily download that in a spreadsheet whenever you need it to be checked. Every search needs a reason, you cannot search unlawfully without um the need for a criminal investigation. So it's all part of the platform, we want to be as transparent as possible as what's being searched, why it's being searched, and who is searching it. Uh the goal for that is to reduce bias in what we're doing. And you, it within the platform, like I'm saying, you cannot search for any personal identifier of an individual human. The only search criteria is make of a car, color of a car, model of a car, and the time that that car was seen, and then the license plates. There is no personal identifying information that can be searched, it's taking all the bias out of it, it's strictly factual that this car was in this area at this time. It is helped, or is used to help solve a crime, but these pictures don't solve crimes on their own. They are strictly putting the car in a certain location and that is it. Uh another thing that we offer is a free transparency portal. It's something that the uh York Main Police Department, they publicize on their website, I'll show you an example of what it looks like. But it's all built with transparency in mind to allow everyone to understand what's going on with Flock. So this is what York uses today, I know it's not a perfect zoom in, but you can start to see what is and what isn't collected. And what is acceptable use of these um cameras and what isn't. And you can specifically see prohibited uses include immigration enforcement, traffic enforcement, harassment or intimidation. Use it solely based on a protected class or personal use. Um access policy is completely, only access available is through the police department, uh data is deleted after twenty-one days. So it's all meant to be very transparent, allow you guys to understand everything that's going on, we have nothing to hide, we want you to to know everything that is going on with the cameras. Sorry, it's not allowing me to go back to full screen, but uh we'll use this and and, you know, lastly to round this all out, right? What these privacy concerns are all about. Again, this is not facial recognition software, we are not using this to to say that you missed a stoplight, you have a parking ticket. This is none of that, this is to allow your police department more evidence to solve and prevent crimes in your town. And also collaborate with other agencies to help make a safer state and a safer country. A couple of quick examples of how we've already seen wins and success stories with Flock. So we've been doing a trial, uh not with our own cameras here in Wells, but it just accessed to our system. Our collaboration with other police departments across the country. And uh chief was able to find a vehicle and collaborate with the uh Fairview Park Police Department in Ohio. And the vehicle was involved in multiple burglaries burglaries, excuse me, in the state. And once we entered that.
In town.
Or in town, excuse me, and once we, once we entered that into a national uh crime database. It was able to alert the PD in Ohio, this car was in their area, and suspects were arrested, stolen property was found. And Wells PD was able to issue warrants and both suspects were extradited extradited to Maine to face charges. Another few examples of uh the York Main Police Department. So over the past two years, York has been a partner with Flock and they've seen everything from uh sex offenders on their beach. Being captured through Flock cameras to federal forgery cases, uh to recently this this summer. A missing senior citizen and a missing juvenile, both were found and located by the Flock cameras, um seeing their vehicles. They had stolen vehicles that were returned and uh arrested suspects. And just this week, the NCIC had a missing persons. Uh alert for a former military personnel with PTSD that had suicidal threats. And they were able to see the vehicle, pinged on their camera. Uh get with the guy and and return him home safely before anything happened. So um right here in your community, these are working and they are seeing real results.
The the top one there, uh summer twenty-four arrested, uh serial sex offender conducting lewd acts on beaches across town. That was after they had it for like a week, one of those acts was there in Wells. And we were able to get them because of the Flock cameras. So we participated in that one.
You got them because you had the license plate, not.
Yeah, it it was all, yep, it was all in that group, we had a description.
But not a picture of the person.
We don't have.
No, person.
Cameras, so how can we do it?
No, we we gave out our description that we had.
Of the vehicle.
And of the vehicle, and they found them.
So it wasn't because we had cameras, it's because somebody else gave.
Another department had them, yes.
You, sorry, I don't wanna dis. You mentioned that you can't connect the vehicle with with a person, so how did you? How did you connect that that suspect with his or her vehicle?
That's not, I'm saying that's not something that Flock can do, police departments have the ability to do that already.
Through investigation.
Flock is not relating any individual to a vehicle, it's strictly just giving you the vehicle information. Another one in Sanford, um they were able to track a stolen vehicle down to Massachusetts. And collaborate with the agency in Massachusetts to recover the vehicle, bring it back to Sanford and arrest the suspect. Um a little bit outside of Maine, just in this year, um a silver alert was issued for an eighty-three-year-old man with dementia. Who went missing, um the man was disoriented, he even tried to stop at a hotel to stay the night, ended up sleeping in his car. Uh the man was missing for fourteen hours and Flock cameras were able to pick up that his vehicle, once we knew the man was missing. His vehicle was in this area and officer was able to um bring him home safely. So it's not just violent crime that we're solving here, it really has an effect on the community as a whole. Uh another one is antisemitic crime, um I I think, you know, we see a lot of this across the country day in, day out, right? And so, an example in Georgia, where the vehicle description was out on Facebook, we were able to type that in Flock. And identify the suspect and bring him to justice. Um the last piece I'll bring up is involving missing people. And this is just an example of how quickly these these uh this system can be effective. Amber alert goes out at twelve thirty, one oh one, a sus- or a search is conducted, by two thirty, the vehicle is located. And by five, the uh felony stop and arrest, and a baby that was kidnapped is now reunited with her mother. So um you know, to to round this out, Flock has helped over, helped reunite over a thousand missing people. Back with their families based on these these cameras and what we're able to do, it's the power of the network. The the idea is to build a better and safer community around. And just in the state of Maine, we're working with all these different agencies here that you see on the screen. Um to put the same idea in mind, to build a safer Wells and a safer state of Maine, so that is it.
That'd be, that'd probably understand something, if we. Uh if our cam, if we have these cameras and they're collecting license plates. And we're not sharing that information anywhere. How does this work? I mean, how, how's it gonna help us?
You can s- you can connect with national uh criminal databases.
Okay, so you're saying you can connect them.
So you can get a alert if a criminal is in your area with these cameras.
Yep.
Because it's pinging the license plate.
So in order for us to get a alert, we have to send out all the information to someplace on how they're gonna know.
Can you explain NCIC?
There was a murder dropped up in Walderville um a few days ago.
The town show would be nameless.
Sorry, the town show me name, nameless, but there was just a murder that was recently done, conducted here in Maine. Subject uh fled the state, there was possibility of a couple different vehicles that they were associated with. Uh I think it was probably at least two days, I'm gonna go on a lower number now, two days, that trying to figure out which vehicle was being operated at the time. At five o'clock on Saturday night, they figured out which vehicle that was being operated. They sent out an informational alert nationwide because we didn't know where the suspect might have gone. That informational alert had the plate number that.
In NCIC.
Yep, in in that, in NCIC, that plate number was entered into a Flock system. And in less than two hours later, the, another agency down in Florida had posted online. About how the suspect was in custody, less than two hours.
Two hours.
So we had multiple days of attempting to locate somebody, the second that we got a plate that was entered into a system. That system worked as, and it, that's how the cooperation as far as in the NCIC piece of it. Which then alerted the the agency in Florida about the suspect being there. Less than two hours it took, and it was multiple days prior, that this murderer was running up and down the east coast, that we had no clue about. So that's where it's extremely beneficial along those lines, let alone the amount, the number of people here in Wells alone. That we have located elderly people that are on, from Pennsylvania, that we've sat with until a family member could come. Now, we didn't know they were in town until they had just pulled over, we stopped and checked on cars that were pulled over. If we would have had a system that would have alerted us, we could have gotten them that much help that much sooner, um along those lines is another example, so.
Okay, so now the way I understand it is, you have to have an an incident.
Mm-hmm, yeah, and that's how they track everything.
And knowledge that this particular vehicle was allowed in that incident.
Correct.
And then you send that out wherever.
And so we're already sending out, so a missing person is called a file six, does that make sense? So, I know that doesn't make sense, but it does. A missing person is a file six for us, we're already sending that information out nationwide. Now, all it's doing is taking that information and just adding one extra layer of, hey, look for this vehicle. So that hopefully we can return this missing person. Yesterday, we were chasing uh a younger gentleman, we, he was in town, on the phone with his parents, suicidal, wouldn't tell him where what where they were. He was just driving up and down Route One of one oh nine, he was driving around trying to make it so that we were unable to locate him. With this system, that's a, that's a thing where a person is in danger, we would enter into their system, title. Missing endangered person, put a case number that goes with it, so it's not just some, it's something that they can call us and say, give us your, give us this case number, what's it all about? We can then return all the information to them. We wouldn't have been playing the cat and mouse game with this with this younger person, we would have been able to find them faster. They were located, thankfully, they got stuck in traffic down in Agunkwa, so that works out, it's, but um. Yeah, it's, but if it wasn't summertime, let's say, so, but it's just another piece that it's, that that right there allows us to. Locate somebody to give, to to provide aid to them, right? Um so it's just something, it's just another, another tool, just like, you know, we we were. We were body cameras, we're perfectly fine with that, it's it's not a thing where it's concerned, yeah.
Just out of curiosity, you mentioned you've got forty-nine states, what's the f- fiftieth state?
Alaska.
Alaska, and do they have a a rule, like, is it just because you haven't gotten up there, or is there?
It's more, it's more than that than anything, there's, there's no, yeah, there's no legislation that says they can't, um we just haven't, haven't gotten up there yet.
Interesting, okay, and.
You heard him say, we have a twenty-one day retention period here in Maine, most states are thirty, Maine has even narrowed that down even further. Because of concerns, so which is, which is good.
And York is the uh only town in Maine, or are there more with the cameras?
No, the, every town on the left here uh is a, is already a customer with cameras. And then the ones on the right, the ones with asterisks, have signed contracts with us. And then the ones that don't have asterisks are at a stage where we're presenting to boards for um town council.
Just to, right after, when I got an email on uh. Mayak, Maine Information Analysis Center, sent out a email on June twenty-sixth. Uh for South Poland PD, they had just gotten the flock cameras. And they asked them to put it out, it says, South Poland PD CID, which is Criminal Investigation Division, recently installed seven flock. Um safety license plate rec- uh readers in high-traffic areas within our city. The initial contract is for two years of service, but since the units were installed last week. They have already, they are already proven to be helpful investigative tool, notifying us of several mo- uh multiple stolen vehicles. Suicidal individ- individuals, bolos and stolen plates. So there are, and we get these and what the, the reason they put this out, they were hoping other people would go on and do the trial period like we're doing now, just being able to. We don't have cameras, we can go in and look.
How how long, how long have you had access to the database, like?
Two, two weeks?
Yeah.
A week, two weeks? Yeah, uh and it's a, they do this just so you can see how to use it and and stuff. But it's uh, it's, again, it's it's technology. Uh I know a lot of us times were resistant to technology, it is the uh. I believe it's the the future of policing, a lot of it is in solving cases, enhancing, you know, enhancing our ability to solve crimes. And it's uh. The technology helps resolve certain types of cases where vehicles are involved. And and if it saves one person's life, one child's life, it's worth it. And I guess if you wanna solve crime, you gotta go with the wave of the future and how it's going.
Just a quick question if I could, I'm just a little confused, so we talked about you had access to the system. But I think you said that the system was compartmentalized, how could you have access to a system that's com- compartmentalized, what does that process actually look like?
Um I guess if, I I I wanna understand your question correctly. The, she has access to to our Flock system of cameras where other PDs are sharing. Information, or they're sharing their data, and she can run searches on plates based on other cameras in other jurisdictions. So that's the access access she has that was granted to her by these other agencies.
Yeah, and you, no one gets to see it unless they grant you. Ability to do it, so like I would go in, I, just to see what it was about, all about, you know, you wanna see what you're looking, looking at. I went in, I put my license plate in, of course I can find it anywhere, 'cause I don't go anywhere, but um but you can. I'm trying to think whose we put in, oh, yours, we put Habsin.
I I I will say on it, we looked, we did my search, you looked at it, and as we can tell, I'm not a small individual. And in my tiny little car, you still could not tell that I was in my car. Does that, it, does that kinda make sense? Cause it's a back view only, it's not the front view of my car. So even me, in my little tiny little thing, I wasn't even overflowing out of it.
You couldn't even tell how many people were in the car.
So, it, but you could see my car, I was like, oh, I went down, I went down that way on this day, is it there, and so we looked.
But chief, you talk about the uh the technology aspect of it, um you mentioned the, it's, I think you call it the the. Car footprint, fingerprint, um now, I I was reading that it's it's powerful enough to identify a bumper sticker, is that correct? Like, you could find a car just based on a a bumper sticker? How how does that, is that like, like how does that machine learning work?
I mean, that's, that's, I'm gonna be honest, that's a bit above my pay grade in terms of the engineering of the the AI and machine learning. But it can pick up on, there's a few things that, like a bumper sticker or a window sticker, um a toolbox on a truck, things like that.
Damage.
Yeah, that damage to a vehicle that the AI can can understand and um locate, but again, it's all vehicle. And it's, it's not anything to do with the individual driver, it's just the vehicle, so.
And people need to understand too, and I'm like, you might, you probably say this a little more eloquently than I do about uh being in public. There's no, and the license plate is not your license plate. There's no, and the license plate is not your license plate, it's the state's license plate. Um and I think you and I, Avery, I think you and I talked about that a little bit, didn't we?
Well, and I can add, you know, I'm looking at the array of customers that you have up there, all border our community and beyond. Um and I recognize and what I appreciate is that it is not um identifying people. I fully appreciate what we heard a few minutes ago about facial recognition and those types of things. Um and having been privy to some of what you've shared with us tonight ahead of time, that's my comfort. Um I I absolutely, I heard about Fourth Amendment rights and things, but recognizing that we are operating on a public way. We are on the state's registration plate. I I guess my question would be, the expectation of privacy is nil if we're not looking at people. Um and I recognize the power of this um this new technology. And it's not terribly new. I know there's much more that's advancing even as we as we sit here. Um that's my only comfort level, and I'm not here to promote one way or the other. I'm very interested of the concerns of the public, and that's why I wanted to put this on the agenda. Obviously, they hear concerns or questions or support from the board and others. Um but I am comforted by the fact that we we are on camera all the time now anyway. Everyone knows if you've got a cell phone in your pocket, we know where you are. I mean, just it's easy enough.
So.
It's not looking at you, if I understand correctly, and point well taken, um it it can't find you in your car, you know.
I just have a, you know, um.
Because obvious.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry, um you make a good point, right? Like, our phones do track us everywhere we go. But I don't think, I I think where we might differ is I I don't think that that's a good thing, right? I think that we're, the phones are only allowed to track us that much because our representatives are too and I and don't have the knowledge or are paid off to the point where they aren't willing to make those kinds of regulations to prevent it. So I I don't think that those kinds of, like, just because they're commonplace doesn't make them.
Correct.
By choice, and I appreciate that. And you don't, you don't have to use a phone. You're you're on a public way, that's my only, that's all my only thought process.
I know, I'm, yeah, I I because I'm, it is connected to people for the simple reason, my license plate number. You look at that, you can find out right away who owns that plate.
Doesn't mean you're driving the car.
Yeah, I, no, but I mean, but it does connect to, you know what I mean? So there is a connection to the people on that part of it. And um and I just, and how do you know that it can't be like broken into or hacked or, you know, people can find out, oh. I would rather really, you know, we we're discussing here, and I I don't care if people clap or not clap, but you shouldn't clap anything, just listen. Which can we ask respectfully? Only because um it just, it may inhibit someone to ask a question, who maybe didn't agree with this. So um but anyway, but I, so I I do have a problem, it's like Big Brother's watching you. And um and and it comes to that, and all these, I I totally understand, but right now, if you were to have a a license plate number and you you send it out, do you not send it out even now to say? And so I mean, in case people stop somebody and they have that license plate number or whatever, that, you know, that's how you get them if you don't have the camera on it, right? Or the toll booth has it every single time you go through. So I mean, I mean, that's right, but that, but I mean, no, I mean, but but so you know, yeah, that's happening. But it sometimes it's just creepy, you know, having one more thing, and I totally understand that it might help solve problems.
Well, I mean, this isn't something we're gonna be looking at day in, day out.
Yeah.
And that's, I guess, I think there might be a little bit of misconception on that. This is something, um say we have a um, I'll give an example, someone, they're having a bike race in town. They, car comes in, wipes out one of the bicycles and takes off. Someone, probably not the bicycles is down, but someone, or maybe another bike or bystander grabs the plate number off the car. Or a partial plate number, it's a, you know, one, two, three, and it's a a blue Honda. That information can be put into the system. And hopefully, we can find that car, at least get the full plate number to contact them later, or go after them or find them. If there's no such, no cameras anywhere in the area, say you're down south where they have a lot of the cameras, like Volusia County where they found the murderer, um you can, you would be able to find that person very quickly. If you're in a place where there's no cameras, that's never gonna get solved, or very rarely will that get solved. It's a tool. We're not gonna be in there running everybody's plate. That's not what this is, that's not what this is about. You're not, you're not running people's. We can already find out who owns a car. We don't need this for that. This is just a tool to solve crimes or help solve crimes, or help find an endangered person. Help find, if it finds one kidnapped child, I'm sorry, but that money's, whatever it is, is worth it. If it finds, I will tell you, we've had, recently we've had a case um where we had all kinds of evidence, we got all kinds of evidence. These cameras were used in another town, bordering town, shows the suspect vehicle in the state of Maine. Without that, what if we have someone's word that, oh yeah, he came, he was here? It it just solidifies a lot of evidence and things like that. So it's, it's a tool, it's not, like I said, we can go run, we can go to the parking lot and run every car in the parking lot and find out who owns every one of them. Not through Flock.
And it's not an invasion of privacy.
I know it's not, I know.
It's.
But it's, yeah, I mean, so that's just example, that is, that's a tool that can you use to solve things like that. Or say, we have a lot of uh thefts down at the harbor. And things like, a lot of money down there, millions of dollars down there. And you have, uh someone comes up and says they have, you know, all kinds of fishing poles stolen, or their lobster's stolen out of their crates or something, and we get a partial, they say, well, we saw a truck, dark colored Ford truck leaving the area at a certain time. You can plug that into the camera and possibly get a plate and solve that crime. I mean, that's, that's what this is for. I mean, and I think other people have different ideas of what it is, and it's not what they think it is. It's has nothing, you know, it's, it's not that at all. And you know, again, we're looking at it as a tool to to help um solve things. And I guess if, I guess that's how I look at it. I wanna solve crime in Wells. And so do the guys that work, guys and girls, sorry, that work for me. Um that's what this is about. It's not, it doesn't have anything to do with invading anybody's privacy or overlooking on anybody. We're not, no. Since we've had this, I'd say a couple of weeks ago, I think I've been in it twice. And that was just say, hey, I gotta remember how to do this, cause I don't wanna lose the knowledge, and that's it. And we've used it, we used it on that one case, it was actually a rape case that I just spoke about. Uh and you know, people say nothing happens in town. Newsflash, things do happen here, we don't tell you all about it. Cause I want people to think this is, it is a safe community, and we wanna keep it that way.
John, you have a question?
Yeah, I do.
Oh, sorry, John.
Yeah, no, it's it's all good. I I appreciate the flow of conversation. I mean, look, you guys know me, I don't mind sounding like the nut about technology. Chris, I know you and I have differed on things a couple of times. I've taken issue with five G repeaters on cell phone towers and things like that. So this is, this is not out of place for me, and this is a distinction I wanna make. My concern with the technology is not with you and your agency at all. I trust you folks, and if it was just you folks, frankly, I'd be comfortable. I I just would, I have every bit of faith in all of you. My concern is a little bit more lofty, and that's why I asked about the interfacing specifically. Because I'm curious how this interf- interfaces with other levels of government. I'm not gonna get into, and I'm, I don't, I wanna make no mistake about this, this is not a commentary on anything that's going on now. I'm gonna go back to the Patriot Act. We've seen violations of similarities with the Patriot Act. It was one of the most egregious bills that was passed in this country. We've seen the FISA courts abused over the years. And I'm, I, that's why the interfacing is important to me, because the biggest crooks in this country are men in suits, and unfortunately, we get new ones every four years or whatever, two years, or however many, you know, frequently, we get the elections. There are some good ones in there, but we've seen political appointees who have gone in that just have an agenda, and they go in and they they use these tools and this infrastructure to go in and just, I can't remember what the exact number of federal rules and regulations are in this country, but it's some staggering amount. I think it's hundreds of thousands of pages along, uh hundred, hundreds of thousands of pages long. So where does that leave us as a nation? We never take, we seldom take rules and laws off the books, but we love to add new ones. It leads to subjective enforcement. So what I envision, and maybe I'm crazy, I'm fine with that, if everybody thinks I'm crazy. But if somebody had it out for you, what's to stop someone from going through, looking through these hundreds of thousands of pages of rules and regulations and saying, well, there he is, and now we have this piece, we have that piece, and piecing it together, and it's not just this system I'm concerned about. It is the cell phones, and I also have grave concerns about the use and proliferation of artificial intelligence. Frankly, I think that we are walking into a big problem right now, that our elected officials, for the most part, are just kind of ignoring because they appreciate this matter of convenience. Even the the godfather of AR, AI, the former corporate executive at Google, says that there's a ten to twenty percent chance that AI could wipe out humanity. And I understand these are little systems, but all these little systems play into a much bigger system. So these are my concerns, you know, for what it's worth. And again, nothing to do with Wells PD, and I understand it's probably frustrating to hear it, but it's it's
Good.
It's it's frustrating for me to watch us be okay with our cell phones listening to us and oh, it's a tailored ad to something that you like to buy. Well, I'm sorry, but I'm pretty sure that Edward Snowden blew the whistle at the NSA was recording our private phone conversations and storing them based on keywords. So that that, those are my concerns anyway.
So let me ask a question, Hannah, you'll be up next. If um we got a request from an outside agency, what do we do with it? When they give us a plate number, and uh there's a request for this particular plate number, and that person happens to live in Wells, what do we do with it? And we know that that person lives in Wells. We get a request from an outside agency, like.
So you're gonna call us and they say, hey.
Yeah, we, there's this place number, you, you know, I put the plate number in your system. Um and you find the person, you report it to them.
Well, it would depend on why they're, they'd have to have a reason, like you said, you have to have a reason if it's a missing person. Sure, we're gonna try to find him.
Yeah.
Uh or say they had, I'm trying to think.
Do you have any way of verifying that their uh stated reason is correct?
Oh, that would have to happen, cause you have to put a reason in. Not that they can make one up, you're right. But that's why it's.
Because if the person that's requesting it is not violating the law, and they're gonna get charged with a crime, even if you are a police officer, by 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 looking up a plate illegitimately.
Right.
So.
Okay, so I'm gonna just follow this thread on a little bit.
Go ahead.
Uh we we have um a great number of individuals across this country. We're basically uh going after quote unquote illegals. People who are in this country who are not quote unquote here illegal.
Yep.
If someone uh gave a plate number and that person came up in the town of Wells, what do you do?
They're gonna have to va- they have to have a valid reason to do it, or we're not gonna do it.
They say that the person has a warrant, and it happens to be an administrative.
And that's easy enough. We can just run the plate, not through Flock, through our own system, and say, and then we'll know if there's a warrant for them. And then that's, that has nothing to do with Flock at all. And I can, I think people getting a little mixed up between NCIC and Flock and those type of things. Cause you can't find out who owns a car through Flock. You can't, you can't do that, correct?
But you can locate the vehicle.
You might be able to locate a car, sure.
Or see that it.
You can see that it drove through, you know, three days ago. Not after twenty one, after twenty one days, it's gone.
Okay, then let me ask this question. If uh somebody makes a request, you find that vehicle, and uh do you uh, do you arrest the person? If if they say it's an arrestable offense?
If there's, if there's a warrant for them, sure. A criminal warrant for somebody, but you wouldn't have to, you wouldn't do that through Flock, you'd do that through NCIC.
So if we have, happen to have a US citizen who lives in this, in the town of Wells, who's passing through the town of Wells.
Sure.
And that license plate comes up, and someone nefariously from another state sends that information to to you, and you arrest that person, we're subject, and it's, it's not a valid warrant. It was subject to legal action, is that correct?
But again, that has nothing to do with Flock, that's the NCIC.
Well, it has to do with the police department if you arrested them based on disinformation.
You're not gonna arrest them unless it's an NCIC, you're not gonna arrest them on someone say so.
I think with or without, the thing that, the thing that you need to understand is with or without Flock, all that circumstance can still happen.
And it can happen.
Yeah.
With or without Flock, that entire scenario.
It just makes it easier to locate the person with Flock.
It does, and that's a, that's that's kind of our point, is it, is it does, because, but not for that scenario.
Yeah, not for that.
So right now, we have a home invasion at a at a residence right here on Sanford Grove, we'll say. We have that home invasion. We are now going to spend hours going up and down house to house, asking, hey, do you have any any cameras that we might be able to see, or trying to get these videos of vehicles. This is literally days that that takes for the, for our detectives bureau to be going out, for our for our patrol officers to be out and doing all those things.
But you don't know what the vehicle, what the vehicle is to begin, right?
No, say we have a white box van.
Okay.
Yeah, does that make sense? So if we have, if we have a partial description of a white box van, we're now going, and we, we're gonna go through, and we're gonna go to each residence. We're gonna ask them, hey, do you have cameras? Would you mind sh- seeing if there might be a white box van that comes through? If you do, you can give us a call back if you want us to view it, you can just download it, share it to us. We're not gonna, and if they're volun- and if they give us that information, that's great, and that's how we solve our crimes right now, which is days and weeks. Compared to white box van, okay, I just took literally probably fifteen minutes tops, and I'm already starting on my trail. Now, the the timeframe is key for me, as a patrol, as the patrol person, the timeframe's very key for me because I might be able to stop the next one. Does that make sense? I wanna be able to stop the next home invasion, the next burglary from stu- from happening. And and an example of that would be the Ohio one, where they went down, they broke into, they sma- it's smash and grabs. They go out to the car, they break the windows, they reach through the windows. When they reach into the windows, they take the stuff, they go. They now find the next parking lot, where there's a lot of cars, that they can now do the exact same thing. We have this information available to us, we stop that next parking lot. And now we just stopped a huge loss to all, to all of the citizens, our citizens in our town. We just stopped that loss to the, to taxpayers. Then now the insurance company doesn't have to pay out, but now this doesn't have to pay out. I'm not minimizing anything on what anybody is saying on that. It's just a matter of that, that tool and that ability to be able to solve a crime and the pride that that comes with the agency that you have representing your town. With the pride that they have to be able to say, hey, I took care of you. I made sure you're okay. That's the pride that they love. Like, that's what this agency loves. I can tell you that one hundred percent from talking to people that are involved in it. And this is just something else that we want to try to help us out with. That's the kind of the roundabout way.
And and he he spoke, it wasn't a home invasion, it was a burglary, about a box truck. That's a real case, and it's cold now.
We have uh written protocols on how this would be used.
There will be, there'll be a policy on it, just like there is with everything.
And there's laws in place.
There's laws in place.
Entitled twenty nine A, there's already laws in place that are, it's a classy offense if it is violated on that.
So what's that, so say that box truck had happened up there and you had a camera, we, in this vicinity. You can look at whatever vehicles went by at during that timeframe.
Correct.
Okay.
If it, if it got a license plate.
We can look at the vehicles, then we can get the license plates, then we can try to work. We will try to work the case. We call the owner, hey, who was using your truck? We don't say you were using your truck.
How does the camera actually work? It only focuses on cars going by, not people walking by? Or does it just take a a constant running picture of anything going by?
It's triggered by vehicle motion.
By vehicle motion?
So I have a little license plate in the back of my bicycle, you can catch that.
Gotcha.
We we can pick up the mics too.
Okay, I I I spoke with Tim earlier today, when he asked me, he told me he would be available, asked me to take over his chair tonight. And he had a suggestion, uh he said, he said to me, there's probably more questions than answers than that we're gonna get tonight. And he proposed having a uh workshop on this, where you could have your, all your protocols present to us in advance and give us, uh that's what Tim suggested.
And the cost.
And the cost.
And we get, we do, I understand what all you guys are saying. And just like with many other things, it's, it's, I get, I get where you're coming from, I do. But again, you have to know where coming from and this, it's all good intent, we're not out to. And I hope you guys realize that, I mean, we, we wanna keep you and everybody else and everybody in this room safe. And it, and like I said, if if, and what it does is, uh, one thing we didn't explain, how, you explain how that wor- works?
I guess, you're talking about, if, um, so if a vehicle was involved in a crime, you can get, or a missing persons in that vehicle.
Like an amber alert.
Yeah, an amber alert, for for instance, if there's a vehicle associated with that person, should that vehicle travel through one of your cameras, you can be alerted to say, hey, this vehicle. this vehicle's in your area, it's part of a national criminal um systems that something is going on with and you can alert your responding officers to respond quicker and respond safer. You don't know, you know, that could be anything from a missing persons to a murderer, right? And you want your officer who's responding to that to understand what is is potentially going on in that vehicle and um that's what the alerts will do.
And not every crime has a vehicle associated with it, and that's what, you know, it's just because there's a warrant for somebody, doesn't mean they have a known car, known plate, or anything like that. I mean, this is, again, amber alert, silver alerts where um that comes to town, it'll alert your phone. You can go and try to find that car and and save the child, the person, help the person, the elderly person get back home. And that's where it's used probably probably fifty percent of the time, almost. Around is the silver alert, amber alerts, endangered people, mental health issues, suicidal people, things like that. And you can see I did uh I gave you guys a bunch of the examples, and there's even more than that, that's a that's just a sampling of.
And here, does it say what towns around us have it?
Uh no, not that one.
Of those, I think three of them were from Maine and the rest are similar places.
Yeah, that's just.
And let me make a uh a comment with respect to this. I don't react well to shock therapy. In other words, when you try to shock me with pictures and crimes and stuff, I start asking more questions, some less questions.
And and it's not shock, it was we were hoping to be informational for you, it might answer some questions.
Yeah. So I for one, I don't feel that I have enough information tonight to.
Don't have to be here at all.
Oh, I don't think there wasn't, this was just a discussion, we weren't gonna.
Yeah, it's just a discussion.
But I do think a workshop would be well worth um going through and and maybe asking a few more details because when I first saw that, I wasn't really sure what this block thing was because it didn't really, it just said that it was a bunch of.
Apparently, everybody on the internet knows what it's about.
Well, I know, but I.
Yeah, I just wanna say just touch, I just wanna touch on one thing that we kind of talked about. So everybody's concerned with invasion of privacy. But I just wanna touch, if you own an iPhone right now, well, our iPhones just recorded this entire conversation, it's always listening. Has anybody used Hey Siri? And it trick it it comes on, that's because it's always listening for that trigger word. So you have an Amazon Alexa at home, a device or something like that, that's recording your conversations with Alexa. Google it and look it up, both, but wait, your internet service provider is also tracking all of the websites you go to. And it's stored on a database.
That's all fine and good, but that's not our our police department.
So there's, but no, I just wanna finish, I just wanna finish, so. With that being said, whether you are right, left, center, whatever, I think we could all agree on that a common goal is to prevent crime and to solve crime. And I don't feel that I do not want anybody to come into this town and feel like they can and get away with crime.
No.
So this helps us solve that.
Actually, I wrote a note earlier, how do how does it prevent? Tell me how it prevents, wi- without taking um.
Well, so so criminals, right? That that's like, that's their full-time job, right? So as this technology comes up, believe it or not, they're casing places that know that have that they know they have cameras, so they are going to avoid towns like the plague that have cameras because they know when they drive through, their plate is there and that is gonna link them, so.
And it's also, it prevents it prevents crime by that alert coming to our phone, if say there's say there's a another town's already been involved with the individual, so when they're coming through Wells, we get an alert and say, and you can go find them and hopefully get them out of town before. Just like just like that the murder up in Walderboro, you said it. That guy got all the way to, because they didn't have a plate number, he got all the way to Volusia County, Florida. He could have killed a dozen people in the way, and I I think you guys remember Johnny Versace. Where he came all the way from Mcgunkwick, went all the way down to Florida. Things do happen around here, and I know everybody wants to bury the head in the sand sometimes. No, I'm not saying you, Jim, that's not what I'm saying, I'm just saying, a lot of people don't want to think crime happens in the back backyard, it does.
So let me ask the rest of the board, do you wanna um proceed with this with the perhaps a
Workshop.
A workshop on it where the the police department will uh present their protocols, we get more information on costs,
And the costs and everything.
short term, long term, midterm.
Well, I'd really, I'd really like to hear about that interfacing. I'd like to know the process for, yeah, and and another time's fine, but and if you want me to, you know, email some questions to you, I don't mind.
Sure.
Because and like I said, look, I'm not trying to go on a diatribe here, I just want you to kind of understand where I'm coming from because I I tend to take the thirty thousand foot approach, but I would be very curious about how it interfaces, how the sharing works across agencies, and again, I don't want, and I I wanna just preface this. This is not a a um commentary on anything going on right now. I've read a lot of dystopian novels and watched a lot of dystopian books, and that's where this is coming from.
Sure.
And I thought this way for twenty years at least, so. But I'm I'm curious about that, just because I I that's what I really wanna drill down on is how that can be accessed. Who can access it, under what pretenses it can be accessed? When our department could legally refuse if something was asked for, in theory, that wasn't something that, you know, was maybe appropriate or whatever else.
So I can answer that question, we could we could run this program right now and we could not share our information with any other agency. So we can do that. And at the same time, we could also, other agencies can share with us, it can be a one-way street. So if we signed up for this and it was ultimately decided that Wells did not wanna share our information, we could do that.
I I would really like to have a further conversation, really have time to kind of understand that more and how that, I know what you're saying, the simplistic, but it has to, this the difference between what what did you refer to it as, the the system you guys use that.
NCIC.
Yeah, I'd I'd like to understand a little bit more about all of that, I really would, and how that interfaces to that.
I just have two more uh clarifications before I'm ready to move on. In your presentation, you mentioned that immigration-related searches aren't uh allowed in your.
That's on your yours, uh, that's on your speech.
So that's an of municipality restriction, not a national restriction. All right, so.
It's your it's your data.
Right, so if a if a department, uh, for example,
That's a department policy.
Uh in Virginia, independent audits identified four thousand immigration-related searches using your database. And uh in Illinois, I believe it was, uh without the knowledge of the local police, the DEA used the police chief's password to perform immigration searches. Uh what kinds of restrictions are there for for that kind of password sharing, that kind of abuse?
Well, hopefully, he's not the police chief anymore.
I, well, I.
I'll tell you that.
So I can answer that, so we, well, and you could too, but so we, this login is multi-factor authentication, so that those acts are intentional because the chief is getting a code texted to him and sharing it with the DEA.
Don't swap.
So I can answer that for the chief, that that would never happen, so um here's the law.
That's not gonna happen.
And you mentioned you need to provide a um a reason with your search, right?
Because it's against our.
So are there, uh I'm sure you're familiar, this uh two cases out of Kansas where a police lieutenant uh used the cameras to track his ex-wife. And then a separate instance in a different municipality where the police chief used the cameras uh one hundred and sixty-four times to track his ex-girlfriend and sixty-four times to track her new boyfriend's car. So and and he was able to do that because it didn't get tagged in your system. He used uh search terms like investigation and missing child and uh drugs. And that never got flagged, so how do we know that what people put into your system as search terms are like, after those incidents, were there any changes to your security uh to prevent that?
Well, so our our system can't, we can't stop someone from breaking the law. That is something that they are willingly doing. Everything is just completely traceable and auditable, so if they do break the law, we get them, we can go after them. So that audit trail exists in the system, the second that search is run, chief or whoever's gonna be admin of this system can can know.
So that that's on us as an agency, we're we're such a small agency that we're gonna audit these and we're gonna, I mean, we have twenty-nine sworn personnel, so it's gonna be really easy to see and look at each individual case that somebody's searching a license plate, so. And if someone does do that in our agency, well, uh shame on them, they're violating policy, there's things.
But those, if you were sitting here talking about those instances, you need to understand that makes my skin boil.
They will work on it.
Yeah.
Right? Like, I'm sitting, I'm sitting, it's, I'm sitting here being like, I hate that guy for what he's doing to my profession. So you need to understand that that is the bound, that's the baseline that this system's gonna be worked off of, and I understand that, yes, it can be something that, oh, well, it was it went through Wells, oh, what's what was she doing in Wells, all that stuff. I hope that guy has a nice, wonderful time and a wonderful stay in his nice little prison that's near him.
Well, he got administrative leave, he wasn't.
And that's and that's the that's a fault of the system, right? That's the same thing for any crimes that we're gonna, any crimes that we are that we can solve. Sometimes you get a slap on the wrist, sometimes we'd have no control of that. If it's a situation where we do have control of it and one of our officers is doing that, that's
We can take care of that.
That's a much different situation.
Well, and it's like you you mentioned the police chief, you know, again, don't lock us all into that one batch.
Sure.
So that that seems to be what happens.
You you will be making sure every every time a search like this happens, it's double-checked to make sure it's at what they're saying it is.
Yeah, I mean, there there's an audit trail and each individual officer has their own login that's connected to them with multi-factor authentication, so um.
We haven't even decided, I haven't even decided if every officer's gonna have access to this yet, so.
Yeah. That's true.
That's and that's probably not gonna happen.
So I'm gonna suggest that uh that Mike, we schedule some type of a workshop and in the meantime, all of us can get any additional questions we have, if we're interested in your
Get questions to us, yeah.
what your protocols will be, what protections there would be for our citizens.
Sure.
And um and protections against um illegal invasions of privacy of our citizens.
Jim, will there be public participation in that?
No.
The workshop, workshops are typically be uh between.
Between us. It's not a workshop.
That that's not a workshop. So there would not be public participation in this. You're welcome to speak at open forum at what you've heard before and hereafter, at the public forum section, so is that.
Yeah, and and can we get some information on, this is, you know, more technical about how it works and stuff, you know, ahead of time?
Yeah, any questions you guys have, please send our way and I'll, I can prepare that.
Yes, it's gonna be a question too.
Because these are all examples of what, but I wanna know how it how it works.
Yeah. I'm happy to cover anything you guys have questions about, please.
Great, uh so thank you, uh and we'll be seeing you again.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks. Do you want these out of him? I forgot they were all, I forgot you guys were there.
Okay, please, uh next up. Discussion in action to approve the purchase of a drone to resource well for the fire department.
Thanks for having us, we appreciate it, thanks for, yeah.
So drone technology in public safety and firing us continues to grow. We've been fortunate enough over the last couple of years to be able to utilize that in our community, it's been extremely beneficial for our safety uh with resources um. And I the fire on that we had on one oh nine, uh drones utilized to for hotspots. Uh the roof was unstable in certain areas, so having that thermal technology to visualize certain areas that were hotter than others or maybe more unsafe. If we hadn't had that technology, then, you know, we would have had to push firefighters in certain positions or situations that um would potentially be unsafe, so that technology really assisted us up there. Um so this would be additional, another tool for the fire service in our toolbox, be able to utilize the fire um fire department missions and emergency management missions. Um that product would be bought through the Sourcewell aspect of things, through FlyMotion. One of the things that we look at, um anything that we purchase, we do a lot of research. Uh and you know, we wanted to make sure that uh drone that we purchased is through um a company that was vetted. Sourcewell does that vetting um essentially for us, and we also wanted to make sure that a company uh we're gonna work with uh works with fire departments and works with other um public safety agencies. And the FlyMotion company through Sourcewell uh currently shows do business with fire department in New York. They have extremely extensive robotics and drone program. Hopefully, I'll be able to get a chance to work some of those guys at some point. Um but the fact that, you know, that company uh has been vetted through Sourcewell and is utilized by, you know, one of the best departments, if not the best department in the United States in their robotics and drone um missions, it's good enough for us.
Please.
Okay, was this put into your budget for this year? Did you have a, you know, is this in the budget?
Uh this will be out of the emergency management operational fund. We did not increase that.
So you'll be taking it out of an existing budget item?
Yeah.
If if you're doing that, could you just say that upfront next time?
Of course, sure, absolutely.
It's a much smaller drone, right, than the one that the police department currently has?
Correct, yeah.
And you're getting a a whole bunch of accessories and things with it as well?
Yeah, all the some all the accessories that come with it, um the the case, additional batteries, um.
Training?
Training will be done, so we have all, anyone that operates it, um I'm currently part one oh seven. So our policies, the oper, anyone that operates the drone will be part one oh seven. Uh administratively and operationally, it does make sense, um you know, understanding the police department has theirs and I understand the question, people, how come you don't use theirs, how come I can't fly theirs because I'm my part one oh seven? They have, being a different department with different policies and procedures, administratively and operationally, it just makes more sense for us to operate kind of side by side. Um so if I was to operate their drone and something was to happen, what is that for me, for us, right? Um so again, just operating that separately, being a different department um is just makes the most sense and is cleaner for for both agencies. So we'll continue to work with them, of course, um and I look forward to learning from them and their experiences and the training that they have, so.
So having all these three brother conversations.
That's more than I was.
We talked about this.
I'm like, you know, I'm not gonna be able to do legal death on the back of my house.
Yes, it will.
I think that's important to note that this also has infrared technology for search and rescue, and also
Oh, yeah, right.
I think when you have firefighters in a building, you're able to tell where they're located and if they're in danger.
What I'm really interested in asking the question is, what what will be the, will you have written protocols for use?
Oh, absolutely, yes.
Yes. John, Eddie?
I I trust the fire department.
Well, you know, I and I have to say, it's not like you don't trust the fire department, it's not like you don't trust the people.
Exactly.
But in all the issues that we have, it's always human base that has causes the problem. So there are those out there that you can't trust, so our faith is that you can control that.
You can allow that as quote, uh covered by solid procedures.
Well, right.
Yeah, you have solid procedures and you follow.
Yep.
Right.
Exactly.
We can appreciate that, for sure.
I'm moved to approve the purchase of a drone through Sourcewell for the total cost of twelve thousand five hundred and twelve dollars and seventy-nine cents for the fire department.
Second.
Follows the table? Four zero.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
That's your floor. Next item, discussion in action on bid award for the Ford three fifty dump body installation and vehicle setup for the public works department.
And Steve Buckley is here to present.
Steve, welcome back and.
I say something first here for that, okay? I wanna say, Steve, that when I look at what somebody is requesting and how they lay it out here, yours is a A plus for the simple reason, first, right up front, you say according, in accordance with the fiscal year twenty twenty-six equipment, you explain where that you that, yes, you have the 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 ability to be able to do that this year. Then you go down through and explain exactly what you're looking for and you, I'm telling you, I was so excited, these two things that you brought forward are awesome. And if everyone could put it like that, it would be so much more beneficial. Thank you.
Um so yeah, the item, the first item uh is for the purchase of a uh Ford F three fifty truck with hydraulic dump body. Um so it's put in the memo, uh this was part of the CIP request for FY twenty-six. And it's broken down a little bit, so I'll go through. Um so the the first part is the purchase of the chassis, which is just a blank body. And we plugged to the Sourcewell bid, uh which I put in the memo, um and we got received a price uh for that uh for fifty-nine thousand nine hundred ninety-four and twenty-eight cents. fifty nine thousand nine hundred ninety four and twenty eight cents. That would be uh needs to be manufactured and we'd expect to take delivery of that uh at the end of spring uh next year. Um we did also look at some local dealerships, um just a comparison to make sure that we're we're getting the best deal for the town. Um and we have found one at a Rundle Ford, which is a dealership that we've we've purchased many vehicles from in the past. Um and they are able to get the vehicle um at a price of fifty eight thousand seven hundred ninety three, so it's it's thousand two hundred dollars in savings. Um and we'd also be able to get it within, you know, probably by the end of this week if uh if you would approve that.
Well done.
Um yeah, so uh that was the first part, so if if you're okay with us uh going through the local dealership, um that would um and it was getting that up running for this winter. Um the second part was the the setup for the vehicle, um so for that, we did a formal bid process, we received three bids. Um and the cheapest one um that we received was from Allied Equipment LLC and that was for thirty thousand five hundred and fifty. Um so I recommend that that would be um who we who we use. Uh and then in addition to that, uh is the purchase of the uh Fisher plow, uh and that is for nine thousand seven hundred fifty six and forty three cents. So the total uh cost for the vehicle uh with setup would be ninety nine thousand uh ninety nine dollars and forty three cents.
Quick question, Steve.
Yep.
Can you tell me about the dump body?
Uh yes, it's uh an eight yards, uh sorry, that's a lot of information, um. Uh so it's a nine foot uh six stainless steel body, uh sorry, three to four yards body with a hydrox floor, um and this is similar to some of the other equipment that we have. Um but it's all hydraulic setup, um.
Yeah, that includes all the hydraulics and everything, the central hydraulic system, you're gonna use in that, not the electric over hydraulic?
Yes, yep. Um yeah, and it the setup also includes, um you know, installation of lights and things like that, it's not just the dump body, it's it's the full full system.
That's what I was wondering about, right? Do you have a copy of that, it's funny, Steve?
Um I have a copy of the quote and I've.
Stand by.
Are you, do you have a copy, do you do either? Uh we have.
Just.
That, I was just curious if you had some back on it or.
Okay. Yeah, I can give you this, if you don't mind me giving you a.
Sure, no, add it just as a backup in case we need to get asked.
So, um just when we get ready to do the motion, I can do them all in a row altogether with the total price with each one individually said, or we could, we wanna do it one at a time? I can do either way.
I don't have a problem with all at once.
Okay.
Yeah, as presented, please.
Yep, well, I have a few, because each one's different.
Thank you, Steve.
Any other questions?
Sounds good.
Motion?
I make a motion to accept the bids, um first, the purchase of the Ford F three fifty XL four wheel drive from a Rundle Ford for fifty eight thousand seven hundred and ninety three dollars and the dump body installation um for the dump body to allied equipment for thirty thousand five hundred and fifty. And then the plow gear, which is a purchase of the plow gear from Fisher Plows for nine thousand seven hundred and fifty six dollars and forty three cents for a total of ninety nine thousand ninety nine dollars and forty three cents.
Second.
All of the table? Four zero. I like how you got it under a hundred.
Plan, right?
Okay, uh. Discussion in action on bid award for the tire mounting and balancing equipment for the public works department.
Uh okay, so this is for replacement of a twelve year old uh tire and balancing machines, um that's currently the approaching the end of their service life, um and they also don't allow us to do some uh larger tires for um our light duty trucks. Um so we're looking to um replace it so that that allow us to um service those vehicles uh in-house, um make it more efficient and and save us so some money um using our in-house staff to do that. Um we uh solicited a formal bid and we received a total of four four bids. Um and on this one, I've I'm actually recommending that we don't go with the the lowest priced one, uh we did receive a one for uh nine thousand two hundred and five dollars, um however, we we did some research into this, it was not a brand that any of our staff had heard of before. Um and we weren't really able to find much information, it seems, it's uh um made abroad uh and imported and there's no there's no warranty available, uh there's no service available and setup.
No, no spare parts available.
And no, and there's no set included, so we we recommend it, uh no, um so we we recommend that we that it's not favorable to the town to go with that option.
No spare parts. No reference.
Um so the the next lowest one, unfortunately, it is significantly higher, um but the next one was from uh Napa Auto Parts and that is for eighteen thousand six hundred and eighty eight.
Yeah.
Um and that does come with a full warranty, uh it's made in America, uh and it has um all the parts, everything available, um.
That's out of uh out of two other bids in the twenties.
Yes.
Any other questions?
I move to accept the bid from Napa Auto Parts for the total cost of eighteen thousand six hundred and eighty eight dollars for the tire mounting and balance equipment for the public works department.
Second.
All those in favor? Four zero.
Thank you, Leo, thank you.
Discussion in action to schedule a public hearing to review a lodging license application for five one three Post Road LLC. Is is this, uh Mike, is this scheduled because we, it's not a renewal?
I don't know. Yeah, I don't know if Jodeen is here, um or she's she's left, so I know it was just for getting a public hearing scheduled for it, um.
That's all we're doing is scheduling a public hearing.
That's all you're doing. Absolutely.
Okay, are are you all set for that motion?
Yeah.
I move to schedule a public hearing on September second, twenty twenty five at six P M, two oh eight Sanford Road in the Littlefield Meeting Room to review a lodging license application for five thirteen Post Road LLC.
Second.
All those in favor? Four zero. Discussion in action on a public hearing on proposed amendments to the charter for the Town of Wells relating to the required warrant articles for the annual budget referendum relating to new positions, Mike?
And Leah, you can guide us a little bit too, but in chapter C, um with the charter in section seven point zero eight, um part of the adoption of the town budget, there is a component that um has each position having to be listed um on the town warrant uh for approval um by the voters. And our hope would be that we could um be able to place positions within the requested budget and have the budget be the governing um document that the voters weigh in on. One of the examples that we ran into um was two years ago, when our fire department could not meet national standards for what's called two in, two out. And so we had to propose placing um additional fire personnel um in the fire department, but that reverted to the voters to either approve the additional personnel or not. And I asked Leah at the time, I said, what happens if the voters say, no, you can't have any additional firefighters and we can't meet national standards and we had a firefighter injured or killed because we could not meet those standards? And I I think that created quite a conundrum for us, unfortunately, the voters supported that, but I had deep concern that if we couldn't meet those requirements and something happened, obviously, we cared deeply about the individual, and then what happens to the implications on the community for its failure to meet those standards?
Hmm.
And Leah, I don't know if you can add to that?
Yeah, I think it really is important for, you know, if you go forward, for folks to know that, you know, the town meeting still has ultimate control and approval over the budget, right, and these salary lines are always part of the budget. Um and so it's not as if the town can just willy nilly start hiring people, they have to be approved throughout the budgetary process. Um so there is that backstop in place.
I I think that's that's really, and that that's what highlighted the concern for me is that, you know, we all relying on the expertise of our department heads, myself, you, to come forward in our budget process for our recommendation for what's needed for um accurate numbers of staffing. Um and that was one that really concerned me, if if those firefighter positions weren't approved and we were, you know, in violation of the basically national standards, tough tough situation, and as we assess, the prevailing governance is the are the voters and the budget in approving those positions um incorporated within the budget, and we have to go through many iterations of why we're asking for a position within the budget. And in fact, you and the budget committee may choose not to fund them for some reason. Um so that's that's the rationale behind that request, to have that come before a public hearing for discussion.
Please.
Yeah, um I I understand that they have the salary, but in the and before, when we used to have the people represented one on one at a town meeting, they could actually say um we want to reduce the salary by two hundred thousand dollars because we don't agree with the fact that we're hiring three new um police officers or 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 code officer or dog catcher, anything, you know, and that, you know, and then there was a discussion on that. And they did have the ability to make that decision on whether or not they want to do it, but with the referendum, it's all or nothing.
It's overdone.
You know, and that's the problem, and and I think some of the concerns that people have a lot is that they perceive and it and I'm telling you, we know it's not true, but they perceive perceive that we're adding willy nilly people, anytime you want to, all this person we're adding and we're expanding exponentially the number of employees that we have for the town. If 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 nothing else, even if you had it in the salary, that individual thing should be in the wa- on the warrant somewhere for an explanation. Including in the salary R two, you know, whatever, so that they can see that, that was there, that might be a safety factor, but I think for we've been here for three hundred and sixty seven years or something, but you know, and for the most part, we've done pretty darn good when the people decide what they're gonna want or not want.
Absolutely.
And so and I think if the if the position is is so needed and that is explained well, and we do, I you know, and you do it, you know, and we explain every single time what we're gonna do, why we're doing this, and every meeting, we go back again and we say, well, we're gonna do it. Cause everybody has to hear it at least five times, but um but um and it and that does happen, but it it works if you can explain it. If you just put it, plunk it down, that's not gonna get explained.
Oh, no, no.
You know, that's the problem, you know what I mean, I and that's my fear on that one, I on this one, I looked at that, I'm like, yeah, because most everybody's gossip on, you know, when it comes to town meeting is gonna be about who are they hiring or who they're not. And they can very clearly see what's gonna happen this way, and so I'm kind of cautious about.
Understood and fully appreciate that, Leah and I talked a little bit too about um grant pursuit. Um for example, a safer grant, um and that's to acquire firefighters and we can sometimes do that, there's an opportunity um annually, most of the time, to apply for a safer grant. But if we don't have the positions, we can't afforded us, we can't apply for it versus being able to apply for it, being able to be awarded the grant, which is subject to your approval, of course, and that was another kind of interesting challenge that we came up with. Um and so for what that's worth, I mean, you folks are the judge of how to do that.
But I I just. But I just think if you if there if we needed the safer grant, if that was something reason that we were going forward, that we would be able to get that money for it, there's always strings attached to everything, that should be explained, number one, but um but then the really important reason why we must have that, and and I think that's our job.
Sure.
You know, and your job and everybody in the, you know, to be able to express that and and be able to explain that well enough that people will agree with it.
Great.
Alright, alright.
It's up to you whether you move it to a public hearing or not.
Oh, I know, I know, I know, I know, it's a public hearing.
My my feeling on this is uh this is not the Wells of twenty years ago. It's a much more robust community that has to be nimble um when 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 there's a need. Um so if we approve it in the overall budget without specific specifically specifying that it's a new position, that's okay with me.
I I would I would say that I would absolutely articulate that this is a position incorporated within the budget that's proposed. Here's the rationale of why, it all this does is to remove that component from individual voter approval for they may not like a particular department or a particular position or something, but we have an obligation to be very transparent to the public um about why we would be asking a position, what its function would be, I think we saw that just recently with the three police officers. There were questions about would they be used for enforcing immigration law, no. And we articulated very clearly what that was and we received very nice support for that, and I think that is an example of the trust that the people have in what we say and what we do.
And were they separate from the budget?
They were, they were, cause they're required to be.
Right, exactly, and so that that got passed, you know, you know, that's that's what I'm saying.
Uh huh, no. People have been wonderful about that.
Right, and again, you you know, regardless of, you know, you know, did I like the town meeting, that was pretty stressful. If you've never been to an old town hall meeting, you really don't know what stress is, especially if you and your husband are on agreeant. But um but anyway, but the thing is that I don't care if you just arrived, I don't care if you've been here ten years, fifteen years, or a hundred. Um you have an interest in what's gonna be put forward and you would like transparency on that, and I think one of them is salaries, because it's not just a one shot deal. It's a forever salaries, benefits and everything that move forward, and and that's why I'm saying, but I can make that defense at a public hearing as well.
I will I will never argue one way or the other, it's just a put it out there consideration.
I know, but I'm just saying, and you, you are here, you know, and and you will, you know, you're a person that would look at it, but you put that in a budget that's just gonna have a salary in it and no one's gonna really see that much, that could honestly, that could happen, because there are town managers like that. So, alright.
I would definitely benefit from a public hearing before I'm ready to make any kind of call.
Yeah, so. Oh, I think we should have a public hearing, I'm not gonna vote against that.
Yeah, I think you're right.
John?
I mean, uh we were just talking about moving it to a public hearing and I'd like to hear what the public has to say, so I'm in favor of of what's proposed right now, so.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, are we ready?
Yep.
Make sure I have the right one, okay, I move to schedule a public hearing, oh yeah, that's it. Uh on September second, twenty twenty five at six P M, two oh eight Sanford Road in the Littlefield Meeting Room on proposed amendments to the Charter of the Town of Wells relating to required warrant articles for the annual budget referendum relating to new positions.
Second.
All those in favor? Four zero.
Thank you.
Let's see, next one. Discussion in action to schedule a public hearing on proposed uh amendments to the town charter to convert the position of the town clerk from an elected position to an appointed position.
So I can offer a little bit of background, um we all remember, um back in again, chapter C of the charter, section eleven point oh one, under elected officials, the town clerk is recognized as an elected official. Um soon after I arrived here, Brenda Lehman was the elected town clerk and Brenda was reelected in June of twenty three. Um in March of twenty four, just a few months later, Brenda chose to resign, she was retiring. And that came forward to the board for an appointment um of a person to fill the position until June of twenty six. Um Mary Beth Pordon is now serving in that role and has been since uh March of twenty four. And I think everybody could agree that I've never heard anyone suggest that she's not doing a great job.
She's doing a spectacular job.
So in June of twenty three, this question was posed before presented to the voters. And remember, you have to have thirty percent of the last gubernatorial election, which for us is somewhere around twenty one hundred voters. Um at that particular time, um that this question did pass, but we didn't have the numbers. Then it came back up in November, as I recall, and at that time, Brenda and preceding Brenda um was Jessica, who had served as town clerk, her sisters. And they had come out and advocated that the position moved to an appointed position because of the complexities of the job. I dare say someone just coming in off the street, elected, I I don't think could do that job, I think it's a highly skilled um required job. So at that time, in November, it did not pass. The rationale that I've heard is people felt Brenda was going to lose her job if they passed it to make it appointed, if she was elected. And that if it moved to appointed, Brenda would be out of work, which was not true at all, and maybe we didn't message that well. and that if it moved to appointed Brenda would be out of work, which was not true at all and maybe we didn't message that well enough. So we come back to now and what happens is in, hopefully, we'll bring this forward in November. If it should pass and have the margins, great, it would move to an appointed position and assuming Mary Beth would move on and stay in her position. If it doesn't pass, we find ourselves in June with the potential of an election and the risk of someone um, being elected into the position that does not know the role, the duties, responsibilities, nor have the skills. And Mary Beth is not a town resident, so she can't run for the position. There's the conundrum, um, so that's why I would bring forward to you for consideration for a public hearing to talk about this on September second.
I'm ready.
I'm ready.
I move to schedule a public hearing on September second twenty twenty five at six P M, two O eight Sanford Road in the Littlefield Meeting Room on proposed amendments to the Charter of the Town of Wells to convert the position of the town clerk from an elected to an appointed position.
Second.
All those in favor? Or zero? Next item, discussion and action to schedule a public hearing to access access the Facility Maintenance and Repair Fund for up to forty five hundred dollars for replacement of the large display monitor in the Littlefield Meeting Room.
There's Mike.
Good evening.
He's got the technology background on that.
I heard a motorcycle start in the street, I thought it was you.
I looked out the window, isn't anyone I do? Yeah, as as you know, the big screen has been dead now for a couple of weeks. Um, Shannon had it looked at and it's it's dead. It it lasted us well, it lasted us a good eight or nine years.
Uh, so he's been here as long as I've been.
Yeah, ever since the move from the downstairs meeting rooms to the upstairs meeting rooms, so we've got good use out of it, but uh, technology has changed, of course, the uh, the amount that is in the memo for forty five hundred isn't just for the monitor. Uh, because they're more than TVs now, they're all, you know, smart TVs, monitors, displays. Um, and even though at the time that was a smart monitor, they're smarter now. So it it takes a revision to the code that is part of our Crestron system which coordinates the the wall tablets, the monitors, you know, zoom links. Um, so there's quite a bit of technology that needs to be upgraded, it's not just the monitor. Um, and even the the mounting bracket on the backside uh, is a new standard now, so we need a new the the swing arm is okay, but we need a new bracket to mount the new monitor to it. So that the actual monitor is probably a third of that cost and the rest of it will be installation, you see some wiring to do on the back of it as well. Um, and because when we upgraded the studio a few years ago, we upgraded the 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 software system and the and the hardware as well for the for the studio and broadcasting and it's really limited to that one company that that did that installation, we really have to use them to do this upgrade as well because the code is, it it's not completely open source code, they customized it for our use, like you do in all applications like that, so we were asking for it being a sole source um, item versus putting out the bid because we don't think anyone else can do it, basically.
So typically, when one buys a monitor, you plug it in and just operate it with your current software, why wouldn't that not work?
That's exactly what I said, I said, I can go to Best Buy and I can get it, it's it's because of linking to the studio software, the Zoom, the the wall tablet that you see behind Rebecca, there's another tablet like that in the studio and all of it has to be linked together and communicate to to do the the broadcasting, um.
I'm just wondering if it's because we have that monitor as well that we can't just link the two with it, you know, in other words, if you bought two mon- two monitors, couldn't you just link them with your existing off the shelf software?
Well, I think you'd want the duplicity, like right now that one died and we're able to use that one and if they were purely linked, that might not be the case either, so you want them to be able to operate independently. Um, and that one specifically is tied into the Zoom, tied into the Zoom system. Uh, so you do Zoom meetings and team meetings, this one's not.
It's just a dual monitor system, right?
No, it's more than that, it's it's not that simple. It's technology.
Well, I, yeah, I know, but I suspend um, fifty percent more for the software to use a monitor than the cost of the monitor. Uh, it doesn't make sense to me, it just doesn't, I don't.
Is that all to do with the ninety thousand dollar upgrade that was done to this room for the A V accessibility to the public?
Exactly.
And the software that is being utilized will only work with what you're proposing here?
Yeah, it's it's called a Crestron system
Yep.
and it's a combination of hardware and software. So that hardware that's in the studio needs to communicate with the tablets that are in the studio and the wall with that monitor and this monitor.
So what happened is we locked ourselves in earlier to have having to rewrite software every time we buy a new monitor?
If there's that big, you know, because of the age, you know, it's a nine year old monitor, so just the the technology has changed that much in that period. If it was only four or five years, probably it could be a plug and plug.
Usually, the higher, the more recent the technology, the easier it is to to link up stuff.
Oh, maybe next time we won't have to.
No.
No, you will have to because you're operating with a uh, specifically designed system.
With the facilities study coming up, right, in the event that we have to move to a different uh, uh, like a a a a new or a temporary facility, can this equipment uh, come out and move to that new building or would it be all new equipment in the new?
If it's if if we were moving the entire studio, that would that'd be quite a project, it it would all have to move together.
Okay, I guess we'll just wait for the facility study.
In the meantime, we need a on screen.
I really like having a big screen, I've been making do with the little screen, it's it's okay.
Yeah, yeah, that's not to see from you.
I do miss the big screen a lot.
Will it affect the uh, picture quality on the on the live stream at all, like will we get a crisper image?
I don't know, I don't believe so because that's camera driven versus the monitor driven.
Okay.
Um, because the screen will be a little bigger and a little higher resolution. If they use the camera to zoom in on the screen, it will give a a better image in that regard.
All I'm saying is I don't believe. Because uh, I just don't, you know, my experience has been that you got, I mean, I I use dual monitors at home and all I do is get another monitor and plug it in and decide which one or both that I wanna use.
Good thing you don't have a studio then, huh?
Yeah, good thing.
Are we ready for a motion?
I guess.
Okay, I move to schedule a public hearing on September second twenty twenty five at six P M, two O eight Sanford Road in the Littlefield Meeting Room to ex- to access the Facility Maintenance and Repair Fund up to four thousand five hundred dollars for replacement of the large display monitor in the Littlefield Meeting Room.
Second.
All those in favor? Or zero?
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Mike, when you when do that presentation, do some more research to see if what I suggested can be done.
Oh, I can, yeah, we can, we can look into a little more on it.
Thank you. Okay. Discussion and action.
Do you want me?
Yeah, please, okay, thanks. This uh, discussion and action to accept donations and bequests. Uh, thirty seven dollars from various library users for the Wells Public Library. Five hundred dollars from the Reni Charitable Foundation to the Wells Public Library. Fifty dollars from Brian and Judy Toomey and Fidelity Charitable Donor Advised Fund to the Town of Wells for the Wells Professional Firefighters Community Mission. Hundred and twenty five dollars from Patrick Hendrick to the Town of Wells for the Founders Park Community Center, hundred and twenty five dollars from William Stevens to the Town of Wells Founders Park Community Center. Fifteen hundred dollars from Dan and Jan Dickinson and House How- House Highway Floor Store to the Town of Wells for the Founders Park Community Center, a hundred and twenty five dollars from Carrie Moran to the Town of Wells for the Founders Park Community Center and twelve twenty one, twelve hundred dollars from Mort and Barbara Mather to the Town of Wells for the Founders Park Community Center.
I move to accept the generous donations and write letters of thanks to the donors.
All in favor?
Second.
Four zero. Uh, discussion and action uh, to approve the minutes of, it's July first and the second date is is not Aug- July fifteenth, second date is not August first, it's August fourth?
August fifth, was it?
August fifth.
August fifth, right.
Good catch. I move for approval of the July fifteenth twenty twenty five Selectman Meeting Minutes.
Second.
All those in favor? Four zero.
I move for the approval of the August fifth twenty twenty five Selectman Meeting Minutes.
Second.
All those in favor? Four zero. And for the second time tonight, open to the public, for a total of ten minutes, uh, three minutes per person.
Hi, everyone, my name's Janet Caponia and I am a resident of Wells. Um, I would like to speak about the Flock cameras. One of my real concerns here is when these conversations get turned into, are you pro-police, are you pro-prime? It gets really difficult to have a robust discussion about what are the real fundamental issues? And to me, a fundamental issue is how much of our freedom, how much of our privacy are we willing to give up for security? Um, the reality is that Flock is in a lawsuit um, about fourth violation of the Fourth Amendment. It is going to decision this fall, they have moved to dismiss and the judge has overruled them. So there are serious concerns here. They have also, when there have been these documented cases of abuse, stalking, tracking ex-wives, ex-girlfriends, tracking a woman who went for illegal abortion um, into another state. There are all kinds of potential abuses here and every example that was given about the benefits from this system require you to be linked in to all the other systems. If Wells can't tap into the license plates that are being screened throughout the country, throughout the system, then what good does it do for Wells? And if, because they wouldn't be able to then say that license plate is now here in Wells or get the information for these warnings, so it requires an integrated system. And every time that these abuses have been documented, Flock has said, not our problem. We can't do security upgrades, we can't make this more difficult, it's up to each local police department, sheriff's department, et cetera, to handle this to them and to have it in their protocols. But that means it's not about trusting the Wells Police Department, it's about trusting every single department that is tapped into this system and is accessing information. And that to me is a bridge too far, because when we're talking about a system where people are telling you, don't use face recognition or fingerprint to open up your phone because someone may look at your social media to decide whether or not you can have a visa or whether or not you can teach in Oklahoma. I say, we are on a slippery slope and I don't wanna be, I don't want to see Wells be a part of that, so thank you.
Good evening, I'm Cynthia Doobie, I'm a resident here of Wells and I did have some prepared comments. I'm just going to speak briefly, extemporaneously, which is probably not in my best interest, but I wanna pick up on something that Janet said and that I was thinking about as um, some of you were asking some really good questions, bringing up um, examples of abuses um, in other states and asking about um, the chance of that happening here in Wells and what I was hearing is that, um, well, it wouldn't happen here because of our police chief or our police department. Um, and you know, I love living in the midst of people who are good and honest and live by a code of integrity. I mean, goodness, I grew up in the cornfields of Illinois, that's how we lived our lives and but as Jim said a minute ago, this is not the Wells of twenty years ago. Um, this is not the world of, well, we'll leave it at sixty plus years ago when I was growing up um, in Illinois. So the 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 very thought that so much power, if you will, would be thrust into individuals scares me and so if you can, as you continue to do your work, um, and your research and your probing questions, asking them, what are the safeguards that are not person dependent and um, and I, for me, that's very scary because um, I don't know that there are any based upon my limited research. Um, and that means that we have, uh, we we live at the risk of individuals um, perhaps choosing um, not to live and make decisions the way we would like and now and I think that's dangerous. Anyway, I'll stop there and thank you very much.
Joe Herdy, you know that anyway. I don't have a smartphone, by the way. I'm immune to what he said. Uh, I I wanna compliment you like others have, it's just very good questions tonight from from all of you and I think that's appropriate and I think the comments from the public could that could too and I hope you'll think about those and digest them. And I I'm surprised, John, I agreed with a lot of what you said tonight. You took some of the words right out of my mouth when you talked about the Patriot Act and all the abuse, but anyway. I I I support the police department, I mean, they, most, most of us do, I like the chief and the captains and league and so, but but you know, they're they're human, they make mistakes, we all make mistakes. And as other people have said, huh, that that with a complicated system, and it's not a tool, I take issue with comments that were made about it, it's just a tool. It isn't, this Flock system is part of a technology, a new technology, it's very complicated and that's the representative said it was above his pay grade to understand it, I mean, it's based on algorithms that I don't understand either. Uh, and so it's, there's a lot of questions about what kind of decisions that kind of artificial system would make. We really have to be mindful of that. Uh, the lady mentioned the the slippery slope concept, I think that's overused, but it's appropriate here. This is a slope and I've never seen one slippery because with the way things are happening right now in our country, there is a dramatic turn towards autocracy, autocracy. And agencies are pushing the limits everywhere about what is lawful and what is not lawful. And it would be very easy for a system like this, over time, in spite of the honest efforts of the police to slide a little bit, to do some of the things that were quoted about checking on a boyfriend or something, but without even being conscious of it, to slide over time into into an area that we might not have approved of in the beginning. I mean, it it's really worrisome to me or I wouldn't be here tonight. I I I, this dates me a little bit here, but it reminds me in a way of the Poland Spring issue. Kathy knows about that, I don't know how many of you here do. But they were here and they wore their plaid jackets and their corduroy things and they looked, made nice to us and they they talked about how they, what they would do for the town, but you know, they were basically out to steal our water. And they would have if we hadn't had a termite vote. Now, I'm not saying they're they're out to steal something here, but but there's a threat that our privacy will be taken. I mean, that's very real to me and I think it's real across the board, this isn't a liberal or conservative issue. And I think you hit it that, John, that's all of us, we share that. Um, it's something we have in common. So I'm I'm hoping that if this, you're on a border on fence, Matthew, you have a public uh, a public meeting, a workshop. Uh, I hope you put this out to the community, be- because I think the police department has discovered that most people in this town are not pleased with cooperation with ICE. And that's a mistake the police department has made and I think they're making another big mistake in advocating for this technology. I'm, time's up, alright. Thanks for your comments and I I would like to be, I may attend. Thanks for your comments and I I would like to be, I may attend that meeting, but it would be wonderful, I think, if there was some way people could comment at some point.
Thank you. Time for one more?
Hello, I'm Peg Duddy. I just wanted to follow up on um that last idea about public input. Um, I'm not real clear on how the process all works, but my understanding from tonight is that there's gonna be a workshop which will not include public input. And so my request would be that after that, that there would be public input provided. I don't know how that works, but.
If that happened, we would have to have the desire to schedule a public.
Okay, right.
But that's normally only done when additional action has to be taken after that. Is that correct?
Okay.
We wanted to move forward from that point. We wanted to move it forward so that we were gonna look at passing it or moving it onto a to the public to vote on. It would have a public hearing. But if the work, at the workshop, for instance, if we all decided we didn't wanna move forward, we don't.
But if we decided we did want to move forward.
Then the public would have input then.
Okay, so am I, am I right in understanding right now what I'm hearing? That this is a decision that the select board will make? Whether the FLOC program goes into effect, whether it's hired here in Wells? Or is that the police chief's decision?
We would.
Or do we know?
We could decide to put it before the public or we could decide to purchase it. Is that correct?
I think you have the ability to decide however you'd like. I think, I think there's a financial implication here. And so obviously, it's the people's money.
Right.
And so I think that that's the the piece that we have to be considering um in this. I purposely put this on the agenda tonight for these discussions because I think they're vitally important. Um, to hear from folks about their concerns, their support or lack of support. And so I'm happy you're gonna have a workshop on it. And then you could decide to say, you know, we as a board don't support this. Or we as a board like to have public input and ask the voters at some point in, I guess, June. At this point, we can't make November, whether that's some input. The police could argue that this is a police decision. However, because there's a financial implication, I believe that that's a broader decision.
I'll say.
Connected to that, I would just ask, is it in the budget, similar to what you asked?
Right.
Earlier, Kathy, is this currently in the budget and what is?
It could be in the budget, but it, but I think they have money for it here.
It's not.
There's money under the technology component of the police department. However, this system was not articulated in the budget presentation because this is really very new to reconsideration at all. So if it were to go forward, it would have to come out of a broader technology budget. Um, if it doesn't go forward and the police want to advocate for it in the future during the budget process, they would say this is what these dollars are being requested for.
And in tonight's conversation, I have inferred cost.
Right, that's one of the things we have.
I mean, that seems to be a very big thing this is.
I will tell you that in general terms, it's about about twenty five hundred to three thousand per camera site. Some places, per ca- per camera site.
Per year, per?
Year, yes. And so if you were, for round numbers, if you were putting ten in, it would be thirty thousand dollars. Um, and that's a renewable subscription that that's apparently how FLOC makes their business model. Uh, but that's a, that's a general term for the numbers right now.
I would advocate for public input. Thank you.
I don't have any problem. I think that's a great idea. No matter what we do, if we move it forward, there's no reason not to.
Right.
Have a public hearing.
The other thing that we've done, even if it wasn't appropriate because of the structure, because we haven't discussed the financial implications at this point. Even if it wasn't appropriate to have a public hearing, we have had listening sessions before when we felt it prudent, when there wasn't necessarily anything to advance, so.
Right, I I understand it that other cities and towns, the public only found out about the cameras after they started going up. And I'll say I I do genuinely appreciate that the chief is willing to like have these discussions before making any kind of decisions. I think that's productive.
Yeah, I I couldn't agree more. She and I talked a lot about it and I think it's a very prudent, appropriate thing to have these types of forums. And then through your leadership more.
Good. Town manager's report.
I'll be very quick because the hour is ticking and dinner is on the table somewhere. The good news is we have offered a conditional offer to a candidate to serve as our new library director. Um, we, things are progressing through their background check. Um, I don't anticipate any issues arising. Um, and if that comes to fruition, they'll be on board with us sometime in early to mid September. Um, we are interviewing soon for the Labor and Employee Relations Specialist, um, which again, a position approved by the voters. Um, we had a very, very robust number of candidates for that. Um, we've narrowed that field down and so interviews will be happening very soon on that. We look forward to getting that filled. I'll stop here.
Okay. All right, so um at this point, our regular individual select board comments and subcommittee reports.
Just a quick question for Mike. One of the penguins coming. Mike?
I'm I'm listening. I'm trying to buy some time. Penguins, tell me?
Well, it's freezing in here. I assume that you're.
Oh, come now, come now.
I gotta start bringing a, I gotta start bringing a sweater in August?
Yeah.
So there's a little, little known rationale that I figure if I keep it cold, the meetings move faster, but I think that's wrong.
Okay, anybody, any other comments?
Just had to make a joke.
All right, so uh executive session to hold?
Yeah, I, I make a motion that we move into executive session, so I can say it right.
Personal matter.
Pursuant to one M R S. section four oh five six eight to discuss a personal matter with the town manager.
And we won't be coming back uh after this, so.
That's correct. There will be nothing to come back.
Oh, that's too bad.
So we're only gonna, when when we open the cameras up again, we're gonna be only to adjourn the meeting.
You've been your entertainment.
Say goodnight.
Yes, just adjourn.
So thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you. Does somebody second Kathy's motion?
Back in.
Thank you.
All in favor? Four zero.